Good afternoon, everyone. Good afternoon, community. Good afternoon, board. It feels good to be back. This is our Board Workshop Budget Meeting. I call to order now on this day, Thursday, March 2nd, 2023. This time now, we'll go right into the meeting. Invocation and Pledge of Allegiance. The invocation will be held by School Board Member Cliff Lewis with the Pledge of Allegiance, led by none other than School Board Member Nathan Russ. All right. We'll now call this meeting to order and do a roll call. Madam Secretary?
District one, Mr. Blue.
Here.
District two, Mr. Lannis.
Here.
District three, Vice President Powell.
Present.
District four, Ms. Stewart. District five, Mr. Lewis.
Present.
District six, Mr. Russ.
Present.
District seven, Mr. Gode. District eight, Ms. Kennison. District nine, Mr. Martin.
Present.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. We'll now move into presentations, but before we go into presentations, I just wanted to make the community aware that we, as a board, have been having some ongoing discussions about the importance of getting budgetary concerns out to our public as a whole, but also get in front of them early. So what you all will find is, over the course of the next three months, we're going to continue to conduct board workshops around our budget, leading up to the approval of our actual general fund budget. So I just want to applaud the superintendent for his commitment to addressing any types of budget concerns, but also just making sure that the public as a whole understands what it is that we're looking forward to moving into the next fiscal year and forward. So I look forward to this presentation tonight, and we'll go right into it. Presentation of the budget. Ms. Lopez.
Good evening, board members and Dr. Narcisse. So tonight, I'm going to take you through the very high points of the budget process. The items I'll discuss with you are Louisiana budget law, the board and the superintendent's responsibility, budget procedures, contracts, and general fund revenues and expenditures. The district's budget is based upon the administration's plan for the educational and operational needs of the district. This is inclusive of staffing, academic programming, and facility needs. The fiscal year for the district is July 1st to June 30th of each year. At each fiscal year, the district goes through the same procedures in order to complete our budget. So what is budget law? The Louisiana Local Government Budget Act states that as the board, you are to approve a budget and submit to the LDOE no later than September 15th of each year. The board has always strived to ensure that the budgets are approved no later than June 30th so that we may begin both the fiscal and new school year with an approved budget. Many believe that we are a 501(c)(3), and that is incorrect. We are a political subdivision of the state of Louisiana under the direct supervision of the Louisiana Department of Education. So each year, in order to complete this task required by budget law, the board's responsibility is to have a minimum of one public hearing prior to the adoption of the budget. That is typically at the June COW. To adopt a budget and submit to the LDOE before September 15th, I handle that process through the annual financial report each year. To adopt a budget where expenditures do not exceed the financing ability of the district. And to submit public notice upon approval, which I complete after the board approves the budget to the advocate. So what is the superintendent's responsibility? To prepare the budget in accordance to all regulations and guidelines. To advise the board of any 5% negative effect on revenues, expenditures, or fund balance in any fund. This is completed through the revised budget process. To provide a periodic review of all budgets to the board, we provide each member of the board a monthly financial packet that is at the board meeting every month. So if we do everything the same way every year, what is it we do? So we plan. We start in December, and we begin prepping for both the revised and the proposed budget. We prepare our projections. March through May, the Finance and Human Resources Department work closely to determine the staffing needs throughout the district. All executive leadership chiefs are needed to give recommendations to plan what is the academic needs of the students for the next year. The board adopts. You adopt the proposed budget for the new school year in June. We monitor. As stated earlier, you receive your monthly financial packet every month, and this allows the finance team to take a deep dive every month. Are we on projection? Did we project where we need it? And we amend, and we make budget amendments, and that's done through the revised budget. Because as you know, when you approve a budget in June, things can change. Maybe we didn't need that many kindergarten teachers, but what we did need was more middle school teachers. So we can make those kinds of adjustments in the revised budget. So how many budgets do we have? We have three main types of budgets. We have the revised general fund, the proposed general fund, and the revised and proposed special revenue fund budgets. So what's the difference? So the district has one general fund. It handles the majority of your expenditures. It has less restrictions on the expenditure allowableability than the special revenue accounts do. Your special revenue accounts make up all of your grants and specified funding sources of the district. For example, LA4 grant can only be used for the education of preschool teachers, preschool students. The funding for Title I, you must supplement, not supplant. So they have restrictions on them. And anytime we have, we have to make sure that we follow all these rules when we request reimbursement, because if we have not followed the rules, we will either have to repay the money and/or could have an audit finding. So what is the budget timeline? I've highlighted February, since today is only March 2nd, and that's where we are right now. I've submitted and requested information from all of our chiefs, and I'm currently reviewing the information I have received. As you can see, we will have an additional workshop in April, and the public hearing is in June. The difference between the two is at the workshop like this, you have the opportunity to speak to me and ask questions, but at the hearing in June, the public has an opportunity to make comments on the budget. So what types of funds can have contracts? Contracts can be found in every funding source except for Proposition 3, which is our fund that has the additional compensation for our employees. And contracts can be in multiple areas. As you can see on the slides, contracts can include academic programming, audit services, technology software, even all the way to opening a new charter school in the district. And so what are our major district revenue sources? We have property taxes. Property tax affects your general fund and your ICARE program. We also have a renewal of four property millages coming up on March 25th. Sales tax affects your general fund and your three propositions. MFP, it only affects your general fund and your child nutrition program. Local sources include things like auction sales. State grants includes any grant that we receive from the state, which I like to use early childhood, because many of our early childhood grants are state-funded. And our federal grants, which include items like ESAR and all of our title funding. All of our grants are on a reimbursement basis, which basically means we have to spend the money and then show that we've spent the money and then obtain reimbursement from the funding source, and we do the reimbursements on a monthly basis. As stated earlier, the budget must be completed following all LDOE regulations. The LAFF Guide, or the Louisiana Accounting and Uniform Guidance Handbook, is prescribed by LDOE and lays out the proper coding arrangement for every district's accounting system. So you can see, these are each of the categories and their uses. So some of these are kind of open-ended, and you might say, well, what are they? So salaries and benefits, of course, these are inclusive of everyone's payroll checks. It includes their retirement, their health insurance. Purchased professional services, these are items like contracts, state fees that we have to pay for the collection of the sales and the pension taxes. Purchased property is water, sewage, maintenance of our buildings, maintenance of our buses. Other purchased services include things like our property insurance, our communications, our internet, travel for employees. Obviously, supplies, our pens, our pencils, and our textbooks. Property is equipment and technology, software and hardware that goes above $5,000, as stated in state policy. Debt service and miscellaneous, we have the bond repayments. And other uses of funds and appropriation is our charter school payments. So this chart gives a summary of the expenditures by funding source in 2018 and 19. And when I'm doing a review of different years, I like to use 18 and 19, because I like to call it our last normal year. It was before COVID. It was before ESAR. It was just a normal school year. So as you can see, general fund was 72%. Our non-major funds was 5%. Capital projects was 1%. Child nutrition was 5%. Prop 1 was 6%. Prop 2, 1%. Prop 3, 6%. And Title I was 4%. This chart gives a summary of the expenditures by funding source in 21, 22. And the reason, you may ask, why I'm not using current numbers? I'm using a full audited year, because I think it gives you a better understanding of how the spending works in a full fiscal year. So as you can see, the general fund was 65%. Non-major funds was 6%. Child nutrition was 5%. Prop 1 was 5%. Prop 2 was 1%. Prop 3 was 5%. Title I was 3%, and of course, ESAR comes into play at 10%. So for the general fund, you can see the percentage by category of how the general fund was expended in the 21, 22 year. Obviously, our two largest expenditures are salaries, benefits, and charter schools. So if you need any more in-depth information on the financials, all of these links will take you to our website, to our different budgets. So we have our special revenue budget that was approved, our annual comprehensive financial report, which you just received. April would have given it to you tonight, because I finally got back from the printer. Our annual financial report, our journey for general fund report, and any information you'd like to know about our benefit system.
Thank you, Ms. Lopez.
You're welcome.
That was a great breakout. Are there any questions at this time? Go ahead, School Board Member Gode.
Yes, thank you. Thank you, Ms. Lopez, for the presentation. Just a couple of quick questions. On the expenditures, you mentioned specifically something about contracts and things.
Mm-hmm.
Most of the contracts come under the purchase professional services, correct?
Yes.
Okay, so that's where...
All of them.
That's where all of that would be found.
Yes.
Okay. And then, could you explain to people a little bit about the Proposition 1, Proposition 2, and Proposition 3?
Sure.
Because those are really collected by the tax district, which is not exactly the school district.
Yeah.
And that distinction is important and becoming more important as we go through. So could you explain a little bit about how that is done and how that is collected?
Sure. So the propositions, okay? To start with, only two of them are technically special revenue budgets. Proposition 1 is technically a capital projects budget. So you... The EBR Parish allowed us a 1 cent sales tax, which we break into three pieces. Proposition 1 is 51%, and it includes the upkeep of facilities. It handles our HVAC contracts, it builds our buildings, and it assists in the purchase of Chromebooks, but to a very small extent. Our Proposition 2, which is 8%, it handles all of our alternative school needs, to give these children a leg up, to assist them, to provide additional supports for them. And then 41% is Proposition 3, and that is the additional compensation to teachers. So what I always say is currently 10% of everyone's salary that is not in a grant comes out of Proposition 3. So if it ever failed, 10% of your salary would go away, because the funding source would no longer be there. And as he alluded to, yes, the propositions are not under the direct control of the school board. They have their own committee, which is our advisor oversight committee. They meet twice a year. Any changes that are requested by this board to be made to the tax plan must be approved first by your oversight committee. And that could be if you wanted to say, I wanted to have this school A to be built second and school B to be built first. You would need to go to the advisory committee, the oversight committee, to ask permission to do that, and they would either approve it or not. So that is that, that is that they are separate funds, but they are completely sales tax-based.
And to follow up. And to follow up a little bit on that, the, and I don't remember the exact name, but there is a taxing district that is set up, and that taxing district is what collects the taxes. So when you say "us," that's a general "us." It is not the EBR school district, and this is becoming legally more and more and more important. But it is the taxing district that collects those funds, and then the taxing district then can, at their discretion and their budget, pass those funds on to EBR to use those as described in their budgets that they passed. And so, you know, there are several things going on in the legal system right now, but I think it needs to be important that we remember that we, as a school board, do not collect that sales tax. That sales tax is collected by the taxing district. Mr. Shamlin?
Yeah, Ms. Gode, you may be referring to the EFID, Educational Facilities Improvement District, and that's set up primarily to manage the props, especially around facilities improvement, which is what you just referenced. So that is the mechanism that...
But it's set up to collect the tax.
Collect the tax, that's correct.
Okay, so we, as a school board, do not collect that tax.
That's correct.
Now, the issue, one issue in all of this is that LDOE counts that revenue as, when they calculate how much local revenue is obtained, that we need to pass on to the charter schools. And that's under LDOE regulations that are doing that, but technically, we don't collect those taxes. And so I don't know what's going to happen in the future, but everyone needs to understand that distinction, that that's been the LDOE's position right now. There are some other, and that tax was passed specifically by the district, by the taxing, by the people of the taxing district. I know Breck currently has a lawsuit going on right now with the sheriff around the use of funds that were passed for specific uses at Breck, and the sheriff takes some of that money and uses it to fund, I guess about, I don't know if it's by legislature or not, to fund some retirement plans. We have exactly the same thing going on, where some of that goes to fund retirement plans for the state, and also some of that goes to fund charter schools. Because even, even in Prop 1, where we sit here and have all of the money coming to charter schools, every kid in this district gets a piece of that money. Now, technically, they don't get that money. What you're going to see is technically, that money comes out of our general fund. So we're paying for their share of the Proposition 1, Proposition 2, and Proposition 3. We're paying for their share of those propositions out of our general fund. And as the charter schools get bigger and bigger, that becomes a bigger and bigger issue. So I just wanted to make sure everyone understood how those things interplay one with the other. Thank you.
Thank you, Board Member Gode. Are there any other questions from our board? I see Mr. Cliff Lewis is inside of the queue, and then he'll be followed by Vice President Powell.
It's always tough to follow you, Mike, with any kind of question, anything. I'm looking at Proposition 2, the 1%, and this may not be the form to answer this question, but you said that's where the alternative schools?
Yes.
So if, if we need to add personnel or look at alternative schools, do we make that decision here, or does that have to come from the oversight committee down to us?
So typically, we decide how to use that funding. Now, let me, let me correct my one statement. Yes, it is used to support alternative schools, but there are alternative school teachers and TOR moderators and disciplined moderators in the general fund budget. This is an extra assistance to the general fund to assist those students. So that's not the only location of alternative school expenditures. It is, that Proposition 2 only has alternative school expenditures, but that's not the only place there are alternative school expenditures. Does that make sense? Like, general fund pays a portion as well. Because it couldn't support the entire thing. It's only that 8% of 1 cent, so it's very small.
I would, I would love if we could find some, some dollars to support those alternative schools with social workers. We should visit some of those sites, and I think you'll understand why I'm saying that, why I'm asking that.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you, Board Member Lewis. Next, Vice President Powell.
Mr. Shamlin, I just needed you to repeat the, what were the words for the acronym EFID?
Educational Facilities. Educational Facilities Improvement District.
Okay, now I have entered the queue. Again, good presentation. I like to quantify things in terms of numbers.
Sure.
I'm just a nerd that way. So what I did was, I went back and I crunched all of the percentages just to give the general public an understanding of where we stand in the general fund expenditures. So for salaries at 38%, that is, I won't say approximately, but I will say as a round park number, ballpark number, considering, is 1, 1,089,001 dollars. Benefits at 19% is about $94.5 million. Other use of funds, charter schools at 26% is around 1,290,001,000,000,000.
You're right on the money, sir.
I'm doing pretty good.
You're doing good.
Okay, okay, okay. Maybe in my, in my past life. Property services at 6% is around $29.8 million. Supplies at 4% is $19.9 million. Professional services at 2% is $9.9 million. Purchased, purchased services is $9.9 million. Property at 1% is $4.9 million. And debt service at 1% is $4.9 million. When you add all of those numbers together, considering, it should be right around that number at $497,000,000, $7 million, correct?
Correct.
Okay, sounds good. Inside of these costs, do we have an understanding of where our legacy cost is right now? District-wide? If you don't have that number offhand, you don't have to answer it.
I do not.
Okay.
I do not.
Okay. For the next meeting, can we have that, that number added as well?
So you want to know what's coming back in from ESAR?
Yes. I'm sorry, legacy, yes, legacy. But we also want to know what's coming back in from ESAR as well.
You mean from, like, Baker and Central and all that?
Yes. If you could. Other, I would say, is liability cost. Could we also have that pulled up? So when I say liability cost, I mean monies that we have to expend on, for instance, legal. That would be a liability cost that we have to pick up. So anything that pertains to liability cost in that matter, could we also include?
Sure.
All right. And I know you probably don't have the tax revenues at this time, but by the next meeting, we should have tax revenues that we can project and show.
I have estimates.
So you have estimates now?
Not off the top of my head, but yes.
Okay, no, that's okay. You don't have to give anything, because I don't want you to give any rough numbers today. I want you to have finite numbers so that when we present it, people can feel confident in the information that they're receiving. So the next meeting, we can include those three. So I'll just go over again, legacy cost, liability cost, tax revenues, and I think we also said return on ESAR. Oh, what's coming back from ESAR?
Right.
Okay. Are there any other standing questions at this time from any board members? Okay. Okay, so I'll just reiterate, I don't see any other questions from our board as a whole. But I just reiterate, over the course of the last, I would say, month, we've been having ongoing conversations between board leadership and superintendent and staff, and we find it to be absolutely pertinent that we not only talk about the budget early on and get a early first step and get notified to the board of what we have to look forward to, but also so we can start having these workshops to the community as a whole. So we're going to have several other workshops that are going to follow this as we work through the budget. And leading up, we will have a, a hearing where the public will have an opportunity to ask any questions that they may have. What I will ask today is if there are any standing questions that you all have not asked, or if there are any other things that you think of outside of this meeting, please make sure that you notate them so that we can have all of those things presented and thoroughly vetted before the next meeting so that we can get everything out to the public as a whole as we continue to have these types of workshops. You had anything else, Vice President? Another thing we talked about, though, what I would say is, we had a really good in-depth conversation with the superintendent yesterday, and we found that as we work through the budget, there are some concerns from other members, and because of those concerns, we want to be good stewards. And the way that we look to be good stewards is if there are any expenditures that are going to come up within the next few months, some of those we're going to hold off. If they do not directly impact spending that we need to have on the ground at our schools, those types of things are going to be held off. So you talk about professional service contracts, things of that nature. We're going to make sure that we are being very careful about what we're spending as we continue these conversations to give everybody full level of confidence and transparency that we're putting our best foot forward to work through this budget and all the conversations. Okay. Seeing no other questions, comments, or concerns, we'll go ahead and adjourn this meeting, and our next meeting will begin at 5 o'clock on the dot. Thank you. Thank you.
Good afternoon. Welcome to the Committee of the Whole East Baton Rouge Paris School Board. Today's date is Thursday, March 2nd, 2023, and it is now 5:00 PM. This meeting is now called to order. And if we could have a roll call, please.
District 2, President Lanis.
Present.
District 3, Vice President Powell.
Present.
District 1, Mr. Blue.
Here.
District 4, Ms. Stewart.
Present.
District 5, Mr. Lewis.
Present.
District 6, Mr. Russ.
Present.
District 7, Mr. Goday.
Present.
District 8, Ms. Kennison.
Present.
District 9, Mr. Martin.
Present.
We have a call.
Thank you. Items for consideration. Item number one, school relocation, Baton Rouge Center for Visual and Performing Arts. Consideration of a request for the approval to relocate Baton Rouge Center for Visual and Performing Arts to the Kennelworth Middle School site for the 2023, 2024, and 2024, 2025 school years. May I have a motion? Okay, it has been moved by President Lanis. Is there a second? And seconded by Mr. Russ. All right, comments from our board. Okay, comments from the public. Okay, Ms. Matthews.
I have zero issue with using Kennelworth as a swing space for next year as long as we are not prepared to open the school as a neighborhood school next year. But I do want to make sure that we do remember talking about the fact that that area does not have a neighborhood middle school. So when we are finished using it as the swing space, we need to make sure we come back to the fact that that needs to be a neighborhood school. Because those kids in that area need to stop being bused long distances for the middle schools they currently attend.
Thank you, Ms. Matthews. Any other public comments? Okay, comments from the board. Board Member Lewis.
First of all, I am thrilled that this is taking place. Principal Moore does a fantastic job at that site. I've visited that school and it just warmed my heart to see, you know, those little bright, bright-eyed kids. And that school is long overdue. And also, I'll start driving that way again about 2:00, 2:30, because I won't have to worry about the drop-off and pickup line. You know, I've caught myself taking a quick right going up Valley Park when I'm driving that way. But kudos to Mr. Moore and his staff. They do a wonderful job and they deserve a new building.
Thank you. Board Member Goday.
Yes, thank you, Ms. Vice President. I also just wanted to warmly welcome the BRC VPA to the Kennelworth site. That's a site that I have longed to have back in EBR for many, many years. And I think, you know, we don't have a neighborhood school in that area. And I think bringing this kind of high-quality school to the area will be a major benefit. And I just hope that the people of the area recognize that when that school leaves and it becomes the Kennelworth School again and not the thing, we're going to maintain that same kind of excellence in that school. So that area needs to get used to having a high-quality school in the middle of their subdivision in the area. I share the subdivision with my colleague, Ms. Kennison. But I have half of the district and she has half, half the subdivision, she has the other half. But I'm excited to have that school and I'm excited to have vital learning taking place in that school under our auspices. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Mr. Martin.
Thank you. Following up a slightly more serious note from Coach Lewis on the traffic, I do want to encourage our staff to, as they finalize the planning for the new school at that location, we do all know that traffic is a big problem right there on Acadian Thruway and urge that we strongly look at that issue and addressing it as best we can in the design and planning. And then on a lighter and more personal note, I went to Walnut Hills for fifth grade long before it became the glorious Baton Rouge Center for Visual and Performing Arts. So I would appreciate an opportunity to kind of take a little tour before you bring in the wrecking ball superintendent. Just walk down nostalgia lane for a minute.
Thank you. Dr. Narcisse.
Yeah, I just wanted to add, yes, everybody will get a tour before the wrecking ball comes in. But our goal is to plan to build within that, as we build the building, to take care of the parking lot simultaneously. So all that will be a part of the plan and we'll be bringing that to show folks before anything happens.
Okay, any additional comments from the board? Okay, Dr. Narcisse.
Sorry. Just for the public, I know Dr. Moore is here. In my superintendent's update, we talked about there were two meetings that took place. Dr. Moore, I know there was one that we did was in January, and then there was a meeting that was supposed to happen February 28th. But Dr. Moore decided to hold off that meeting to wait for the actual vote. That's the reason why that communication did not go out to parents right away. But Dr. Moore, after the vote goes through, we'll communicate and then we'll update the parents. So just want to let the families know, just a little bit of patience, but we'll get it done.
With that being all, we will enter into a vote.
Please vote. We'll do a roll call.
Roll call vote.
District 1, Mr. Blue.
Yes.
District 2, President Lanis. District 3, Vice President Powell.
Yes.
District 4, Ms. Stewart. District 5, Mr. Lewis.
Yes.
District 6, Mr. Russ.
Yay.
District 7, Mr. Goday.
Yes.
District 8, Ms. Kennison.
Aye.
District 9, Mr. Martin.
Yea.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
And I'm logged in now.
Say it again?
You said you logged in.
Okay. All right, so item number two, Capital High. Consideration for a request to accept the superintendent's recommendations regarding Capital High School. Such recommendation to begin in the 2023, 2024 school year and to include, A, setting an attendance priority zone, B, setting a grade configuration of grades nine through 12, C, creating a program that includes a hybrid traditional and focused choice school, D, authorizing staff to apply for a site code with the Louisiana Department of Education, Alphabet E, authorizing staff to enroll any students currently enrolled in the current charter school located at Capital High School. charter school located at Capital High School. Do we have a motion? Okay, it has been moved by Ms. Stewart and seconded by Mr. Lewis. Thank you. All right, are there any comments from the board? President Lanis.
Actually, I'm going to hold off. The superintendent just informed me to have a presentation they want to give first.
Yeah. I'm going to ask Chief Brickhouse and our Executive Director of Innovation, Ms. Teresa Porter.
Good afternoon, Dr. Narcisse, Vice President Powell, and President Lanis and members of the board. I am Teresa Porter, the Executive Director of Innovation. I'm being joined with Chief Brickhouse and also Eric Johnson will also join us. Our purpose here today is to discuss Capital High as a returning to the district as a traditional school and also a focus choice program. So a little bit of historical overview about Capital. It is one of the oldest black schools in Baton Rouge. It was established in 1950, and at that time it was on Gus Young Avenue. So they had the middle school and the high school there together. And then when, at the new location, which is on North 23rd Street, which is 40 acres of land, they had a school that could house up to 1,300 students. There's 60 permanent classrooms, but there are no T buildings on the site. So in 2008, 2009, Capital High School was taken over from the East Baton Rouge Paris School System by the Recovery School District. Years passed where a number of charter schools, or charter providers, I should say, they took over the, you know, the daily running of the campus. But last year, with 23, 24 school year, we'll see Capital High School coming back to the district. And so what we are proposing, and Mr. Brickhouse will talk a little bit more about that, is that it will be a traditional model, but it also have a focus choice component in it. And you may have heard about some notable alumni going to Capital High School, like Simone Augustus and Brandon Bass and a lot of other.
And me.
And you, okay? So there are a lot of the notable alumni members who graduated from Capital High School and they're proud to call themselves the mighty Lions. Mr. Brickhouse?
All right, we're here to request authorization to operate Capital High School as a public school under the local educational agency of East Baton Rouge Paris School System beginning 2023, 2024. We're asking for a grade configuration, of course, of 912, as that was the previous grade configuration, and that has been the request of Bessie, that we keep that grade configuration. In addition, we want to look at the programming. The request is to have Capital High School operate as a comprehensive high school with a focus choice option. In addition, we're requesting that we open the historical, excuse me, the historical site code that Capital High previous had before it was taken to go to the Recovery School District. In addition, we will also look at, as by policy, convening a committee to look at the name of the school as well. Also, we're also making one last recommendation in terms of the attendance zone, that we use the former attendance zone that Capital High had and make, as that is going to be called, labeled a priority zone, that will allow students to be divided into three categories. Allow students to be divided into three categories. One, students that were grandfathered into the school, those that, students that are already currently attending Capital High, allowing those students to finish their matriculation. Two, students residing in the priority zone. Those students residing in the priority zone, all ninth graders, incoming ninth graders will be required that reside in the priority zone to attend Capital High. Those students in 10th, 11th, and 12th grade that currently live in the priority zone will be given the option to stay at their current school programming or transfer to Capital High School. And then finally, those students participating in the focus choice option, those students will also be given the priority to go to Capital High School under the participating in the medical programmatic option. And of course, the school will remain in its current location of 1,000 North 23rd Street.
Thank you, Mr. Brickhouse. So what is a focus choice school? This, focus choice schools are boutique models of programs that focus on a particular partnership. So as of now, we have a medical component at Park Elementary, which is right around the corner from Capital High School. Baton Rouge General Medical Center is our partner. We do have the CEO here with us tonight. It is, like I said before, is very small, so it's for only 50 students per grade level. So the focus choice component would only have 200 students. It will go from grade 9 to 12, and we will have a phase-in approach. So the 9th grade will enter into the program for the upcoming school year. There's no academic admission requirements, however, based on what the governance committee decides and bring back to the board, there may be a retention requirement of 2.8 to 3.0, but it aligns with whatever grade point average that the college, that those pathways flow into. And then our purpose, and I should have said this first, but our purpose is basically, we have a shortage in the medical field. And so hats off to Baton Rouge General and our other partners for helping us come up with a solution in order to make sure that we have enough students to go through the track and provide medical care for our people. The implementation timeline, this is a very truncated version. So once, when we get board approval, I want to preface it by saying that, then that very next day, we're going to launch into a marketing campaign. And you see some of the issues, the items that we will focus on, including, you're going to a radio, a television commercial, we're going to really beat the bushes to make sure that those students who are in the capital zone and those students who want to attend the focus choice school, they can apply for a program. Also, it's very important to let teachers and staff know what our plans are. And that is also almost immediately after the board meeting, if you should vote that way on the 16th. And then the parents, the community. It is very important, even though we have been in contact with the community quite often, it's very important for us to come together once, you know, the vote has been taken for this proposal. Hiring, our intent is to have a site-based administrator hired by March 27, so at the end of this month. It's ambitious, but we are putting filters out. And also, April 1st, that's when the enrollment period would begin. We use an electronic process. We will mail letters to parents. Those students in the school will receive a letter. We will mail a letter of intent for those students who are there to determine what they want to, how would they like to proceed. If they choose not to, then we will have a school that we can possibly help them get into. But our goal is for them to stay at Capital and to experience the focus choice model even in the traditional component of the program. And then in the summer, this is really where, you know, it gets really important, because professional development is so important. We want teachers to feel comfortable teaching the concepts. So we will have an extensive professional development theme-based initiative in the summer. But also, we won't, I don't want to forget about the kids. So I'm proposing that we have a focus on the future of medicine, which is like a summer camp. And it will be tuition-free, but we want to just make sure that students feel comfortable in the program and they have an idea what the expectations are. And then finally, we're going to just keep on beating the bushes, recruiting for students that come to the school. Eric?
Good evening. Excuse me, I got a little cold, but I'll try to power through. I've recreated the Capital High zone that we had when Capital High was taken over by the state to create the priority zone that we currently have, which will serve three sets of students, currently enrolled charter students, those who live in the former approved attendance zone, and those who are admitted to participate in the focus choice program. In all cases, in order to serve those students, those students who live in that historic Capital High zone will receive priority. As you can, it's kind of hard to see probably on your paperwork, but the, the attendance zone, the top red line there, that's Hollywood, Plank Road on the east side coming down, and then it jumps over to Acadian, and then right there around Fairfield's, it goes around, comes back down to Acadian, to Florida, and then back to the river. And that's what, that's what the zone consists of. There are currently 838 secondary students that reside in that zone, and there's a breakdown of those by high school on a few pages back, breaking them down by grade level. Right now, there's 96 students currently at Astruma that live in that attendance zone, 61 at Terra, 31 at Broadmoor, and 30 at Baton Rouge High. Any questions?
Anyone with any questions at this time? Okay, Mr. Lanis?
Yes, at this time I'd like to call up Mr. Eduardo. I say Wardo? Guardo. I apologize, my apologies.
Did I do something wrong?
No, nothing at all.
I feel like I'm coming to the principal's office.
No, sir. I wanted to take some of my time just to give you an opportunity to speak on this, on this amazing endeavor that we've been embarking on for quite some time now.
Sure. The idea is to create a model of partnership between industry and the school system to enhance the educational experience of these, of these students. There are several potential industries, but one of them is healthcare. As you all know, healthcare, there's a dire need for workforce, not only in the medical field, which we know nursing and so forth, but also in other traditional fields that we sometimes don't affiliate with hospitals. It could be computer, accounting, marketing, law, culinary arts, you name it, we're like a small city. So, so the idea is to give these students an opportunity to experience what it means to work at a hospital. Everything from internships to the ability for them to see who they could be once they graduate. And obviously, because we're a small city, it's everything from those who would want to go to medical school to those who want to work in the culinary arts or maintenance and engineering. Our staff is extremely excited about this. Obviously, we began that, that work at Park, and I think the results are palpable. We've increased the enrollment, we have increased the performance of the students. I think the teachers are excited. I had a leadership development conference with my top 200 directors and executives a couple of weeks ago, and principal and assistant principal from, from Park went there. And so they begin to sense and feel what, what it is to be, to work, to work at a hospital. So once we extend that, that experience from Park into, into Capital, then my goal is to make sure that all the post-secondary opportunities begin to be funneled earlier and earlier in the process of education. I've spoken at length with Baton Rouge Community College and Chancellor, or Chancellor Smith there, and obviously he has, he has a culinary arts and LPN school across from Acadian. So you begin to see that there's a lot of potential for synergy with that. The idea is that every single kid who graduates from Capital will either have a job with the appropriate certificate, either at the general or an appropriate facility, healthcare facility, or that they're clearly in a path for, for additional post-secondary education. Beyond that, I believe that the model that we're developing here will not only enhance education, but will transform the community development opportunities of that community. Obviously, we have a large facility on Florida. Without a strong community, we will not have a strong hospital and a viable hospital there. And then beyond that, there's an opportunity to create a model for the rest of the school system here in Baton Rouge, I'm hoping, and I continue to encourage other companies to, in essence, adopt a school as a, as a way to be engaged with the community, as a way to guarantee a pipeline of qualified individuals who, who would then work for, for the company. And then even beyond that, I think that there's an opportunity for this to become a model for the rest of the state. There's a lot of work being done right now by Lab E and others to begin to transform educational, education at the state level. And I think this model of recognizing that school systems need to produce a product that companies are willing and able to then employ is critical for economic development in Louisiana. We're, we're in the bottom 48, 49, 50 of any and all types of metrics that you could think of, and without solving the issue of education, we'll never get out of that, of that position. It is possible to, to do it, and I'm here to let you know that we at the general and our board are committed to making this, making this happen, and also to teach others, as we learn how this is done, teach others how to do it.
Thank you, sir. I'll just say for myself, the reason why when you come to the mic and you tell me, or you tell our board what you just said, why it carries weight, you had a daunting task when you took over Park Elementary. Some tried to do it, they tried some modifications and programming, it didn't work out the way that it should have. And for years, we saw the school remain stagnant in terms of the school performance score. In the time that you have been at that school, that school has now grown from an F into a C and has been named one of the comeback schools of the year by Bessie in the Department of Education. So my hat goes off to you.
Yeah, well, you know, I want to take credit for it, but really, it's a whole team, it's my team and Dr. Narcisse's team that made it possible. And we got to remember that brick and mortar is not enough. What changed Park was, was the people and the program. So I'm excited to be a part of it and, and hope that you all support us in this endeavor and as other companies step forward to partner with the school system, that you also welcome them. Thank you.
We definitely appreciate you, and I'll just end here, because we're going to talk about a little bit more tonight about community school models, but in my mind, the way I see community school models is this is the perfect replication of it. You have one school and it has programming feeds into the high school that, and turn can feed into the middle school, and you have a pipeline of students matriculating throughout the school system, getting the same level of rigor, getting the same level of programming. By the time they graduate, they have a full level of investment from our school system and they can be successful in their lives. That is what it's about. I love it and I can't wait to be talking about it later. Thank you again.
Thank you.
Ms. Stewart?
I personally want to thank Baton Rouge General and the collaboration that is about to start. I'm going to just go ahead and claim that with Capital High. And as a graduate of Capital High, I would like to say that that's amazing, as Mr. Lanis just said, I don't want to just repeat everything he just mentioned, but that's amazing what is about to take place and even more so to create relationships throughout the district with other businesses for our students to be able to have that experience and have desires and goals. And I think that's what it's about, and I do appreciate the, all the efforts and the cooperation and the superintendent for initiating this, for happening for Capital. Thanks.
Mr. Blue?
Thank you, Madam Vice President. I see that the, the capacity of the school is estimated around 1,300, and I want to find, is that just the capacity of the existing building or is that what we're anticipating the capacity to be in the future? Is that, is there somebody can answer that?
Eric?
That's, that's the current building capacity. Depending on the programming and what type of classes you have, it may go up or down.
Okay, and, and I, I believe a red, after four years of the focus choice, there'll be 50 students per grade in the focus choice portion of the school.
Yes, the, the range of those schools from, we said it was 50 to 75.
Yes, the enrollment for focus choice will be 200.
Okay, so, so assuming we get at or close to full capacity, the focus choice will be about maybe 15 to 20% of the school, we think. We're looking ahead down the road, not first year.
Yes, because the other, the enrollment will, will be capped, I do believe at 600, so 400 of those kids will be from the attendance zone?
Oh, so, so we're, enrollment for the whole school is going to be capped at 600?
Yes, it's 600.
Okay, that's what I was getting, when I was talking about capacity.
Yes.
Okay, so that, that
So, that, that, that clears it up. I understand that. And also, I just got a minute, I wanted to make sure, I know we've had Capital on the agenda, what if anything has the board already approved, Mr. Shamlin, as relates to Capital High School? Just one.
Regarding Capital High School returning to the district, the board has, this will be the first official action of the board regarding the school being run as a traditional direct-run school. The only other action the board has taken was the formation of a nonprofit in December. But that, that is something that is still in work and process, and there'll be more information brought to the board on that later. So the action tonight for the board is direct-run traditional school, that's the authorization being issued by the board tonight.
All right. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Lewis.
Ms. Porter, could you please unpack the admission and retention requirements for me again, please? You kind of skipped over it real quick, and you kind of lost me there.
So there, I'm trying to go back to the slide. Okay, so the admission requirements, if students are interested in coming to the school, the focus choice component, all they have to do is apply. And, you know, of course, living in these Baton Rouge Paris school system, once they are there, we, and, and there will be several tracks that they can go into, as you heard Mr. Tenaro say, about technology, it could be culinary arts. The governance committee will decide what the retention requirement is, and bring it back to the board, so, for you to vote on. But basically, what we want to make sure is that when students choose a particular pathway, and they go, they enter the post-secondary institution, they can meet those criteria for, for a certification or a degree.
The, excuse me, the 2.8, 3.0 GPA, that was, you know, I was kind of fuzzy on that one.
That's just the range, you know, we haven't decided on what grade point average we're going to bring to the board, because it depends on that particular pathway.
Okay, understanding that some of these young people may come in there aspiring to do these things, but may not quite be at grade level. Are we going to look at enrichment activities, tutoring, summer school, Saturday school? What can we do to make sure that a child who wants to matriculate in this track be able to do that?
Everything that you named. And I'm not trying to be facetious, but that's the key. The key is to meet the child where he or she is, and identify diagnostically what their needs are, and then, you know, take it from that point, which is one of the reasons why that summer program is so important, because then we'll begin to know what those students' needs are, and be able to identify a diagnostic and interventions appropriately.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
I, I might have a question for you, too. Sorry, I didn't, I just didn't want her to sit down and have to get up again, before, I didn't, wasn't waiting, wasn't trying to jump the gun before it was called on. Could you describe to me the, the, the application process that the parents will have to go through? And is it separate from, or, or just a part of, and a check the box somewhere on the normal process to apply to go to a public school in this, in this system?
So it is similar to the way we, we, parents apply for a magnet program. It's online, and the, the parent upload the appropriate information, including grade, grade level, and proof of residency. And then we review it to make sure that they live in the U.S. Baton Rouge Paris school system, seats available, then they get a seat.
So I know I've heard some, some concerns about our magnet school application process being sometimes a little bit of a barrier to, to parents. They have to physically bring paperwork or, or provide information a second time that the school system already has in its record transcripts or, or what have you. Is, is, so it's, it's going to be the same, basically, burden as a magnet school application?
So, I would like to say that we try to make the process, whether it's magnet or focus choice, as efficient for parents as possible. And that's one of the reasons why parents can upload any information, test scores, proof of residency, they can definitely upload that, they do not have to bring it in. Sometimes parents, they don't trust technology. And so when it's information that is confidential, they would prefer bringing it in. But to your point, the process allows them to upload everything to the platform.
Can I, can I just add to that? Also, what we've seen when parents have complexities with doing that, they also can come to the office, or we can go to them as well to try to help them get through the application process, because there's variance levels of, you know, folks understanding when applying to the process. And then our team also goes ahead, and sometimes they will, if a parent comes in, helps them fill out the application too, in the magnet office as well. Well, at this school, we'll try to make sure we also have the counselors to be able to help through that process, depending on that degree.
All right. I, I, I'm going to want to bring back up this general issue, but on a broader scale, because it's not particularly applicable just to this school. So I'll reserve that discussion for a later day, because I do want to, I am concerned that there's some unnecessary barriers to the application process that would hinder those with less means from, from applying as easily as others do to schools like this. So, but that's a discussion for a later day.
And if I could just add one more thing, one thing we've also done with the magnet process, correct me if I'm square, is that we've opened it a much more year-round approach, where the system used to just be in a particular time a parent can apply for seats in our program.
And to add to Dr. Narcisse's point, that we have psych coordinators who actively help parents. We, as he said, we also help them in the office. The key is to make this process as seamless for parents as possible. We don't want them to feel frustrated. We want an experience where customer service is job one. You're welcome.
Ms. Kinnison?
Don't, don't go anywhere. I have a lot of questions about the, the hybrid model, but with what Mr. Martin was talking about, or is it two separate, like, are the, the kids that decide to be, or decide to apply for focus choice, are they already enrolled in Capital High? Or is it two, like, is it two different school, like, is it two different schools? I have a lot of questions about, like, how a hybrid model works. So, but my, I guess my question to you is, so we have kids that apply to focus choice and say they start down the medical pipeline, as we call it. I know that, you know, I'm, I'm a full-grown adult, and I still don't know what I want to do with my life. So if you change, if they change their mind, can they opt to just be, like, rejoin the traditional model? Is it that, like, is it, is it that available? Like, and then what?
So if they're in the Capital High attendance zone, yes, they can transfer into the traditional program. But as students, especially high school students, who, you know, have to obtain Carnegie units, when you get to a certain level, it may be difficult for you to change your mind, unless it's another pathway that is very similar. In other words, the coursework is, you know, can be accepted. One of the things that that ninth grade does, and in, in fact, the, the summer program can also take care of this, is to help students explore multiple career paths. As you heard earlier, technology, culinary arts, is, even though it's medical, medical, the Baton Rouge General is just like a little mini-city, and there are so many different pathways and avenues that a student can explore. In fact, some of them may not even realize all the opportunities that are available for them. And so that's one of our key goals, is to make sure that that child receives an exploratory model in the summer, so they can feel a little bit more comfortable. And if they should decide that, hey, I don't, I don't think this is for me, I want to apply to another magnet school, as Dr. Narcisse said, we have the application period open up until late July year-round.
So they would have to apply to?
Yes, it is an application process.
And the, the kids that are in focus choice programming, are they, are they, are liberal arts classes available to them as part of their regular curriculum?
It is. You know, because there are just so many different pathways that students can, can go into, explore in that medical field.
So it would be a medical field-related liberal arts class?
Technology.
What would that look like?
So, liberal arts, it can... So this is Lily, Dr. Lily Flores, and she is the director of Focus Choice. And so she can give you a little bit more information about the curriculum aspects.
So this would definitely be something we would develop in conjunction with Baton Rouge General, right? So we would look at maybe broad-scope thinking liberal arts, that might be psychology, that might be sociology, that might be some sort of, like, grant writing, something. So thinking, again, these broad strokes of fields and jobs that come up in the medical field, and kind of picking the ones that are in the liberal arts, or if they're, if they're in the technology pathway, picking the jobs like robotics or something like that, and kind of leaning into those fields to make sure we're hitting all of our interests and as much of the scope that we can.
So people, employees at Baton Rouge General would be deciding what sort of liberal arts education a kid is getting?
They would definitely be not deciding, but informing us. So it's a, it's a conversation that we're having with them constantly, asking them, okay, if a student is interested in XYZ, what do you guys think we need to bring onto the table?
But basically, their whole day is, is centered on becoming this employee?
Yes.
Okay. All right. And, thank you.
You're welcome.
My last question is for Dr. Narcisse. What Mr. Shamlin spoke of is that this, this item is to move Capital High from a recovery school to a traditional school. That I support. It seems like making it a focus choice school is, is a lot of elements at the same time. So why, why are we putting it together? Shouldn't those be two separate decisions to make, like, to allow the, the school to return back as a traditional school, and then for us to, because there's lots of questions all around about how a hybrid model works, what, what that really is, what options there are for parents to make it very clear? Why bundle it all as one?
Dr. Narcisse, before you answer, will, can we hold that weighted question in that way that gives you some opportunity to think about your answer?
Sure, yeah, I don't have to answer today.
All right. And then we will continue, we'll continue on. So there is one more comment, and I guess that will come from me, and first is Ms. Porter. If you could come back to the mic, please. Okay, so Ms. Porter, my first question was, I know you touched on this before, but I, I think that we need just a tad bit more clarity. So under the programming structure, what was mentioned was 2.8 to 3.0 GPA. So if, if a student has a 2.5, and they don't live in the Capital High attendance zone area, would their application be denied to be a part of the focus choice school?
So the admission criteria and retention criteria are different. So any student can get in if they apply, and they're on grade level. It's once they began matriculating through the program, and for some reason, they may not want to be there, and they demonstrate that in a way where they're not passing their courses, of course, we'll have interventions for those students. But then if it gets to the point where they cannot pass those courses, we want all students to be successful. Therefore, there, we would have to have a conversation, we would have a conversation about perhaps another career path.
So then that means that they can, once they turn in their application, they can be admitted into the school, and they just have to maintain the necessary GPA?
That's correct.
Okay. So here's my next question as well. Considering that this school is one of our historic African-American schools?
Mm-hmm.
And first of all, I want to say congratulations, because in the meantime, I'm believing that we will be returning Capital High fully, you know, tonight. So with that in mind, though, there is new programs, such as those that exist at Baton Rouge High and, and other schools within our district that offer AP African-American Studies. Is there a possibility for this course to be offered at Capital High as well?
I don't see why not. However, I'm just going to preface by saying, because I am not, yes.
Yeah, that course shouldn't be a problem, whether that's AP or dual enrollment. The, the course sequencing, we will work with...
The governance committee.
With the governance committee around that. The, the piece where the company brings in is the skills. So when you heard Dr. Flores talked about what they informs, they informs on the skills, but our course sequencing, we start to ensure kids have the courses to graduate high school and/or have advantage for post-secondary or certifications.
Thank you. Mr. Lewis?
Ms. Porter, you said something that was very key. You said "on grade level." Do you have any idea how many kids enter ninth grade in our school system who are truly on grade level? My experience is that we have quite a few who are not on grade level. That's why I asked the question I did the first time. So if a kid is not on grade level, is that going to prevent them?
So when I said "on grade level," I meant qualified to enter that grade. I...
You didn't mean they're, they're academic?
Yes, if, if it's an eighth grader applying for ninth grade, they meet, they have, they meet the criteria to do so.
Okay. When I hear "on grade level," I'm hearing I'm a ninth grader, but I'm reading on a seventh grade level or eighth grader?
No, sir, that wasn't my intent.
Okay, well, when I hear "on grade level," that's what I hear because of my experience, what I've done.
Yes. And so I would say that there are a number of students in our school system, even in our magnet programs, who may have challenges, and that's what the key is to make sure we meet their needs, those interventions.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, thank you, Coach Lewis. All right.
Dr. Narcisse told me I could talk.
All right, thank you so much. Okay, so we now have comments from the public, comments from the public, and our first, it comes from Ms. Matthews.
You know, I had everything written out about all the parts of this that I agree with, and what a phenomenal job Rhonda Irwin does over there, and how I think she just needs to be left alone to do what she do. But some things were said that I think I need to take a, a different approach. As a mother of black sons, that's, that's something that many board members may not be aware of when dealing with Baton Rouge General. So I want to make sure that you understand this, because this came to me this summer from one of our EBR students, what happened to him. His mother brought it to me. He was on a, a job with the, the district, the word is leaving me at the moment, where he gets a grade internship, there we go, for, he did maintenance at Baton Rouge General Mid-City. And the white HR lady told him, he's not ready to work inside. So I guess he's a field hand? That's what you're telling our black sons? He's not ready to work inside? And the reason she told him this is because he came out of the bathroom, and as he came out of the bathroom, he was adjusting himself. He was not sagging, he was wearing his uniform, his painter pants, but you could see a part of his underwear, not any of his genitalia, not anything inappropriate, but a part of his underwear. She did not bring it to him, she didn't take him aside as a teenager, as a child, and say, baby, or have one of the gentlemen do it, if, if she felt more compelled, and say, baby, you know, fix yourself in the bathroom, son. As a teacher, you're an educator, coach, what, what you would have done with that young man. Son, go in the bathroom and fix yourself, because we do that all the time.
Excuse me, I'm sorry, point of water. We have to keep it germane to the item.
I'm germane. Baton Rouge General being, having effect with our students.
That's not the item tonight, though, I'm sorry.
It is, having them have effect with our students is very germane. There comes a time...
Ms. Matthews, please keep it germane to the item.
Baton Rouge General is on the agenda.
No, ma'am, it's not.
It being a focus choice school, having effect with our children, they are a danger to our high school-aged children.
What's on the agenda tonight? Just so the record, it's consideration for a request to accept their superintendent's recommendations for a request.
The focus choice should be removed from it, because Baton Rouge General should have no place near our high school-aged children. There comes a time when our boys go from cute to quote-unquote "dangerous." And Baton Rouge General shouldn't be allowed anywhere near our sons, when they treat our children like that and tell them, and actually... when they treat our children like that and tell them, and actually told the mother, "He's not ready to work inside." By the way, EBR handled the situation beautifully, took care of the mother, took care of the child. EBR was on point with it. Exceptional service from EBR. Baton Rouge General, no point to have anything to do with our students.
Thank you, Ms. Matthews. Ms. King?
Good afternoon. I have some things that I wanted to say, but I do want to say that, just to address, I know that this is not on the agenda, but just to address what just happened. That was an employee. Whatever happened at the Baton Rouge General was an employee. If that does not, I'm sorry, if... That does not reflect the organization, nor does it reflect the good that they are doing as far as this program is concerned, in my opinion. But to stick to what's on the agenda tonight, I'd like to say that there have been a lot of details that have gone forth, a lot of information, a lot of questions that have been asked. And I want to appreciate all of the board members for having asked the questions that you asked, because I believe that all of the right questions have been asked. I just pray that all of the answers that were given are to your satisfaction. And I do want to say that I don't have anything to add to that other than that as a member of the community, I stand with the other 5,500 signatures that were received in support of Capital being returned to the EBR system and the program, the Focus Choice program. And I'm here on behalf of Stanford Children.
Thank you, Ms. King. Dr. Hurd?
Good evening, how y'all doing tonight? Okay, so I'm here on behalf of the United Faith Leaders. And I was a part of the group that was at the Capitol when we had the BESI meeting. BESI has voted yes the last board before you all came on voted yes. And I am hoping that y'all would stand in agreement, and we can move forward. We're bringing Capital back to EBR. And I'm in full support of Focus Choice. All right, y'all have a blessed night.
Thank you. Dr. Jones?
President, Superintendent, Madam V, School Board, Dr. Tony Jones, founder of United Faith Leaders. I am a graduate of Capital High. And I know we've been talking about this a lot, I don't know why. The plan is not just an upgrade, it's a facelift. It's not just something for that community. If you go to the community now, it's deserted, it's dry. This plan, this partnership with Baton Rouge General, will not just do something for the students, it'll bring students in the area, but it will bring to life that community. I beg of you, you know, if your heart is somewhere in limbo, this is for children that look like me. This is for a community that at one time it was thriving. All of a sudden, the state got it, it didn't get better, it got worse. I am in support of the Dr. Narcisse's plan, and all of you that voted for it, I'm in support of it. But this is not about anything personal. It's about kids and the whole community. Take a ride over there, just take a ride. You're doing something great. Continue the good work. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Harris?
Good evening, Dr. Narcisse and board members. I'm also with the United Faith Leaders, and I was also at the state meeting with the BESI Board. I also am in support of Capital, of this resolution moving forward. And, you know, there's a petition of more than 5,000 signatures on it that are from the community and supporters of Capital being returned back to EBR. And the community has spoken, and these are the same members of the community who vote for some of you members who are sitting here on the board. You know, I just, I ask that you guys just remember your commitment to the community and move this thing forward. I remember this meeting, and I actually just asked Dr. Jones, why are we still talking about this? And I thought it was something that was going to be settled. Please move this forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Robinson?
Good evening. First thing I want to say is I appreciate the question from School Board Member Lewis as far as the GPA requirement. We don't require high-school athletes to stay within the range of 2.8 to 3.0, nor do we require our magnet students to remain in their magnet programs between that range. So I think that is something that needs to be addressed, so I appreciate that question. And I do believe that when you move into high school, the transition is not the same as it was in middle school, and it's going to take time to adjust. And so I do hope those children are given the fair shake in the same regard in which School Board Member Lewis spoke of. Secondly, I appreciate School Board Member Kinison's question. We're about to, the goal is to remove a school from the RSD and bring it back into the school system so it could be a traditional school. The Focus Choice Program is still something that is fairly new. I believe Ms. Kinison's question was, would it be better if we move it back in, master the traditional program first, and then bring in the Focus Choice programs? This is why I'm in support of that option. When I, over the summer, when I went into the schools to check out the schools in my community, what was going on, I saw principals and teachers at the table struggling to come up with a curriculum that they were supposed to get help from and guidance from the school board and also the Baton Rouge General. And that's what they told us at the press conference, we're going to give so much guidance. And guess what, that guidance wasn't available. And I'm not telling you what I heard, I'm telling you what I saw with my own eyes. I saw them frustrated just days before school. And actually, one of the Focus Choice Schools didn't get the third-grade mathematics books that they needed until, I think, November. I think this is something that's still new, and we don't need to bring something in that we're trying to maintain and keep here under a new program. I think Dr. Jones said something that I didn't think of it as before. He said, "This is a facelift. Facelifts must be maintained. You don't give Botox injections once and then stop. You have to keep at it. This is something too new. We haven't even done a good job with mastering the traditional program yet. Let's do that first, and let's make sure Capital High stays where it belongs in the Spanish-American School System. I know we all agree that it should come back, but let's make sure it comes back the right way. Thank you.
Thank you. Judge Johnson?
Good evening, Pamela Taylor Johnson. I have on my card, I support it, and I do support Capital coming fully back. I support Focus Choice. But I'm kind of torn here, because, you know, there are some good points in terms of let's master where we are. I understand the Focus Choice portion of it for marketing, to get folks to come in and do that and do it well. But if we are ready for that, let's do it. If we're not, let's wait and do that. To hear Ms. Matthews, hear Storm talk about this unfortunate situation that happened with the children, you know, that always bothers me. So as we look at partnerships, perhaps we need to look at that. Let's just not just brush it off like, oh, that was an employee. No, it's important, because you make or break children all the time. You decide, we as adults make quality decisions. And sometimes we do it without thinking how it is impacting the lives of children. But we have to look at all of that. That could be a life-changing experience for that child, or it may even impact some other children. So I just believe something like this needs to be addressed. And as we forge partnerships, we need to look at those kind of things and make sure that we have enough diversity in all situations, curriculum and otherwise. And we talk about the core curriculum, of course, you're going to have a core curriculum, you have to have Carnegie units. But I'm excited about this Focus Choice Program, I really am, because that's an opportunity to move those children, children in that community forward, to experience new things and different things. The only other component that you don't have anything to do with, or perhaps you can kind of advocate for it, healthy housing in that community. Part of being able to have those children learn appropriately and well is to have healthy housing, which is not available. So as we partner, as we talk, let's talk about all of that if we're truly talking about moving them children forward. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Mr. Harrell?
Hello, Board, my name is Jack Harrell. I'm a 1981 graduate of Capital High School, and I'm also an officer in the Capital High School Alumni Association. I support, first of all, I support the recommendation that we go forward with this as a traditional, with the traditional component and the focus component. One of the, when this program got sold to us, when, you know, we were approached to talk about it, the focus component was the key thing that made a lot of us buy into it. Otherwise, we could have stayed with the state. You talk about the traditional thing, well, guess what? Actually, Capital, the traditional component is presently doing well. That's part of why the goal is to keep the traditional element that's working over there, keep the good things that's going on, because we got good things going on over there, that's been going on for the last couple of years. But the focus component is the key. Without the focus component, you know, to me, it's useless. We need to do them both now. In 2008, Capital got taken over as a traditional school. So all of these people that are sitting up here talking about, go one step at a time. Well, guess what, we did that one step in 2002, 2003, all the way up through 2008. The traditional scenario didn't work. So, you know, basically, over the years, we got a little better traditionally, and now we are ready to go to the next step. I 100% support the focus angle. And if anybody out there or up here is against that, then in my mind, you against Capital. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Brown?
Good evening, everybody. My name is Coach Eric Brown. I'm president of Alumni Association at Estrema High School. And first, I want to start off by saying that this looks very similar. I spoke at the BESI Board about the same thing. Estrema went through the same thing. And believe me, if we had a choice to come back back then and come back now with Capital is about to have, with Focus Choice and tradition, man, it's a no-brainer. I mean, I want what Capital have. So, I mean, if the Capital people don't want it, again, Estrema will want it. Okay? Okay? I go to all the schools, I go to all the schools, and I go to all the charter schools. And guess what? They trying to figure out Focus Choice. They trying to figure out how they can bring in this same type of thing. I mean, they bringing me in, let me have a conversation with it, you know? And I don't have a clue, you know? But I know one thing, it's different. And I know, and I'm going to say this too, the worst thing with Estrema, we thought Estrema was going to come back the same way like it was. Well, guess what, that'll never happen. So Capital will never come back like it was. So all the memories that you have with Capital High School, man, keep them. You both have the memories. But guess what? We have a new set of kids that's coming with their own memories and their legacy too, you know? So, I mean, it's disappointing to hear people speak against the Focus Choice. I mean, we cannot keep doing the same thing over and over again. And, I mean, this has been like 14, 15 years. You know, and I was just, I was thinking, you know, when friendship took over Capital, you know, at first, we solicited them first, we was hoping, you know, that they would come to Estrema. Thank God they didn't take us. Okay, oh, my goodness, thank God they didn't take us. Because guess what? We'll be going through the same thing Capital High is going through. And, I mean, that's my family, that's my friends, I mean, my family from the Park East Town area. I mean, Capital is my school, too. I mean, I didn't graduate from it, but that's my school. That is my school. So, I mean, we just got to think about it. I mean, are you for the kids? Are you for the corporations, the businesses, you know? I mean, I can't think what other thing you can be for. And then saying, wait, wait for what? What we waiting for? 15 years? Come on now, thank you.
Thank you. Representative Marcel?
Good evening. Thank you all for allowing me to speak. And, Mr. Brown, we do not want what Estrema has. I am a 1978 graduate of Capital High School. I am a lifetime alumni member and a full supporter of Capital High School. One of the things that I heard over and over again when we start talking about taking Capital back, and we, this is not anything new. We've been saying this for years and years and years that we wanted our school returned, and we could not get that done. One of the things, when they started talking about a hybrid model and focus, we did not want our traditional kids left out. And so to bring these two together, I think is important. I think what you're hearing, I don't think anybody in the audience really doesn't want it to happen. I think there is some pause on how does it happen? And to make sure that we get it right. I don't think anybody out here wants to say, you know, we don't want Capital back as a focus group. I think what you heard was we want to make sure we get it right. And I certainly want to make sure that we get it right for our children. I have a great-grandson that attends Capital High School, so I'm invested in Capital High School. I always give money to Capital High School. I've put up money for their auditorium, and the superintendent and I are having some ongoing conversations about how do we continue that without tearing down something that we can build up. So I look forward to working with you all, I look forward to this measure passing, and I look forward to Capital going up, up, and up. Let's just maintain a great program at Capital High School. And thank you all for allowing me to speak on tonight.
Thank you. Ms. Corley?
Good afternoon, my name is Karonda Corley, proud parent and disabilities advocate. I am so in support of Capital High being back up under EBR school system, and I am in support of any and everything that is going to be inclusive for our children with disabilities. So I am going to reclaim the 2 minutes and 40 seconds for the next agenda item and just tell all the alumni I look forward to being a part of your steering committee for Capital High. Thanks.
Thank you, Ms. Corley. All right, seeing no other public comments, comments from the board. Mr. Martin?
Thank you, Madam Vice President. You know, there's been a very interesting discussion here tonight. I've got my, you know, I've got some questions and issues with the broader Focus Choice Program, which we'll be dealing with as time goes on. But for me, I'm going to support this resolution tonight as presented for a couple of reasons. One, I think this decision has largely already been made by this board, you know, before most of us took office. And I think reversing course on that, for me, as a new board member, would not really be appropriate. That would be undermining the hard work that went into this deal to get this done. And so, you know, that's not to minimize any of the concerns expressed about the Focus Choice model tonight. I think Mr. Robinson, Ms. Matthews, and others have made some excellent points that we need to consider. But I also think that it is fundamentally very important that we increase the involvement of industry in Baton Rouge with our schools. of industry in Baton Rouge with our schools. That's not outsourcing anything. That's taking advantage of resources that we have. It's a mutual need. There's no Baton Rouge without business. And, but there's also no business in Baton Rouge without education. And so we have got to work hand in glove with industry, and I support and applaud all of our efforts to do that. And I think this is a very good step forward, while I reserve the right to question some of the details as we move forward. So I'll be in full support of this. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Russ.
I want to thank the public for their comment on bringing Capital High back to EBR schools. Clearly, the community is in support of this move and has voiced that, the importance of that. And the focused choice model, from what I understand, and Dr. Narcisse, you can help me with the details on this, a couple key components of this is that there's an advisory committee or a stakeholders committee that make a lot of the decisions about how that school is governed. Is that correct?
That is correct.
So they'll, that committee, when formed, assuming the board approves this and this moves forward, they'll make recommendations on things like retention GPA. Is that right?
That is correct.
And then also the further efficacy of the program as it rolls out, curriculum, all those things, which are, I think, are many concerns that have been brought up, correct?
That is correct.
So one of the things that I like about this model that has been developed is that it allows the stakeholders in the community to make decisions about the school that is their kids, right? And one of the reasons why I joined this school board was because I believe that parents need to see a lot higher investment into their schools and community. So for that reason, I support this. I also believe that we have a responsibility as a system to provide innovative opportunity to our children, especially in communities where we have seen decades of disinvestment. And so, again, for that reason, I support this measure.
Thank you, Ms. Porter. I have another question for you. If you could share with us, just from your recollection, what is the normal GPA or retention GPA for magnet students?
So we have programs where there are no retention requirements at all. Then there are retention requirements with 2.0, 2.5.
Thank you. So that's just something to consider as well. I agree with Mr. Robinson. I agree with others that may have mentioned it on the board as well, that in the process of thinking about the structuring, that we may want to consider allowing the retention efforts to be similar, if not, maybe even a little bit below that, to the other programs that we have available in order to, in all fairness, and in order to be able to continue to recruit students and maintain the same student body. Thank you so much. Also, I would like to yield the rest of my time to Dr. Narcisse for him to respond to Ms. Kennison's question. Of course, I see that she is the next in line as well. Yeah, well, she had a question, she had a question before we had public comment. And at that time, I did not allow Dr. Narcisse to respond to her question. So that's why I want to give him the opportunity to answer her question.
Yes, I can do that. Does Ms. Kennison want to, if you have an additional question, I can wait for your additional question. You're in the queue, so.
I do have an additional question.
If that's okay, if I can respond all of them.
The petition that was signed by over 5,000 people, is there someone that can, who's seen that? I can ask a question? You can ask? Who's seen the petition that was signed? What was the avenue to get those signatures? And what did it, did it say specifically on the petition to return it as a focused choice school?
I can, I can respond to some of that. Actually, I'm a part of the alumni, and I know an email was sent out in regards to a portion of that petition, and we could have signed that way.
So there was, there is mention of it returning as with focused choice as part of it? And is there, was there any explanation of what focused choice means?
I can't recollect all of the details, but as far as you questioned the method on how the signature was obtained, that's not an answer. Somebody is coming up.
My question is more specifically if focused choice was a part of that petition.
Yes, we had, we had to be specific, Board Member Kennison, to the Betsy Board. I presented in conjunction with the community members, council, and at that time with existing board members on the board to Betsy, we had to do two presentations before they released to say that the school can come back to EBR. And the, some of the components that you hear about, the hybrid, traditional, were some of the agreements we told Betsy that we would do as for us to accept the school back. We also, Betsy also held with the state superintendent and ourselves, community meetings to let the community talk. We spoke to Alumni Association. And then we can have some of the community members that you heard speak tonight, they can give you more detail to that, that they had about, I thought it was 5,500 signatures. Is that right? And I think Board Member Lannis, President Lannis was there. He was at all the meetings as well. And then, and then we create the model, and then that's how we brought those to the board.
So the signatures that are on there, is it safe to assume that the majority of the 5,000 people who signed that understood that what was happening, not just to return it to a traditional school, but that the focused choice model be implemented? That's, that was clearly on the, so like I could look at it and call one of those people?
You can call it, Board Member Kennison, and also you can go back to the video to see the actual presentation we provided to the state superintendent, the Betsy Board in conjunction. We all did it together.
Thank you. All right. And Mr., I believe that there's, I believe that there's some clarity here. So Ms. Stewart, what is it that you would like to share with Ms. Kennison?
I wanted to share with you that I do have some information that I can give to you through the email generation, as I was telling you that I'm a part of the alumni email. And within the email chain, there is information that talks about that in regards to the Betsy meeting and the returning to Capital and dealing with the focused choice. So I can send you that information. I have it.
Also, if I may add, if you don't mind, I'm just gonna jump in real quickly. There were about three-minute meetings that Betsy conducted. The meeting where the signatures were rolled out was the same meeting that we rolled out the focused choice model to the entire state and to the Betsy Board. So just to give a point of order in that regard.
Did we answer your questions, Ms. Kennison?
Sure.
All right, Mr. Gode.
Thank you. I just wanted to also add, like Mr. Lannis, I attended, I think, all of those meetings that we went through. And one of the big topics of discussion was how would we be different than what the charter school was there running? And the big difference was the focused choice and the connection with the Baton Rouge General. So that was one of the key building blocks for coming up with the idea of moving the school to the EBR. In addition, one of the key stumbling blocks at Betsy was Betsy didn't want us to ignore the community and ignore the community kids who might want to attend that school. And so one of the agreements that we had with Betsy was that we would be able to accommodate those children. And so really, the concept of the hybrid school comes out of the whole process that this went through over a period of six to nine months, where the focused choice was a big selling point to the community. But also with Betsy and others in the community, a big selling point was being able to maintain the local attendance for the local kids. So the hybrid is not just something that dropped out of the air that someone thought about. The hybrid is the end of a long process with community input and walking through that. So it's not just something that's just come up. It's something that's been talked about. And, you know, I, like I said, I attended the meetings, and those were the kinds of discussions we had at the meetings. The second point I want to make is, you know, this is talking about 50 kids per class, and we're talking about being a third of the attendance of that. So there'll be, you know, two-thirds of the class will be traditional. But there's a misconception, I believe, that goes around focused choice. And the focused choice is a model to provide opportunity for exploration to kids. It is not a corral that puts kids into track on their careers that they want to go through. I attended some of the focused choice schools. They weren't called focused choice, but they basically were the same kind of thing. They had a different name in Miami. And went to some of those, and one of them went to was the performing arts. And they had a tremendous performing arts program over there at that school. The whole school was performing arts. But when I went and talked to the individual students, about a third of the students were planning on going into law, and about a third of the students were planning on going into medicine from a performing arts school. And so, you know, don't get into any parts of your mind that if you're in a focused choice on a track, that that has to be the career you go into. It's providing you exposure to those careers, but at the same time, you're still also taking all of the basic courses that you need to take. And even within the focused choice schools, there are other options for, in the scheduling process, other options for other electives that you can take outside of just the focused choice school. So some kind of way, this image has gotten to be the focused choice is I got to make this decision at eighth, coming out of eighth grade of what I'm gonna be when I graduate from college. And that's really the wrong, the wrong thing. But there are so many kids, I went to the job fair, not job fair, but the career thing that we had at the LSU Ag Center, which was tremendous. And just watching the 1,100 kids, we had 1,100 kids come through that program, watching them understand what are some of the opportunities in these various fields, that they had no idea those opportunities existed. And so I just don't want to get caught up with focused choice being constraints on the ability to kids to pursue their dreams, because my goal is to have every kid possible to build or pursue whatever they start and want to pursue. But that's really the image you ought to have. This is more of an exposure-type thing. And look, you know, taking scientific courses in medical focus, those same scientific courses will transfer to lots and lots of different STEM applications in the world as you go through this. So a lot of this is teaching you how to think. It's not teaching you necessarily direct skills that will directly, no kid coming out of high school is gonna go perform surgery, okay? It ain't gonna happen. But a kid coming out of high school with a real background in how the scientific method works, how to do math, how to do all these things, prepares them to pursue pretty much any career they might want to pursue, particularly in STEM areas. So I just didn't, I just don't want us going too far down that path without really understanding that, how the focused choice really works. And I'm out of time. I'm sorry. I apologize.
Thank you, Mr. Shamlin.
Yes, several board members referenced Betsy's return, Board of Elementary and Secondary Education's return to the school with conditions. For specificity, if you want me to tell you what those four conditions were, I can do it right now. Took me a little bit of pulling, but I had to make sure I found it. By the way, our board approved or accepted these conditions in September of last year. The conditions were that Capital High School must be allowed to, that all current students enrolled at Capital High must be allowed to complete their high school career and must be allowed to do so on their chosen graduation pathway. That's the first stipulation. The second, all current employees must be given an opportunity to interview for future positions at Capital High School within the EBR school system for which they are qualified. The third stipulation is that our school board must commit to improving the facility. And the fourth condition was that regardless of future academic programming, East Parish Parish must commit to maintaining an open enrollment pathway for neighborhood students. The reason why that fourth one is important is it says regardless of future academic programming. So I wanted to say Betsy didn't forbid us doing additional things at the school, but it required in our acceptance of the return that we do these four things. And so the programming that Dr. Narcisse is proposing is not, not out of order, but we must respect these four conditions as we move ahead. Does that make sense? Okay. So I just wanted to make sure we walked clear on that, make sure it's for the record that it was kind of understood by the new board.
Thank you. Coach Lewis.
I'll say this, you know, the focused choice may be giving people maybe having a hard time understanding it, and that may be because for so long, there were no choices. There was no focus on choices. Kids graduated from high school without really having a clue where they were going and what they were doing. So now we're at least giving them a foundation with focused choice that they will have some type of idea, some type of path they want to walk down. For 15 years, I worked in high schools and I asked seniors, what are you gonna do when you graduate? Well, you know, I don't know. Because a lot of times, they didn't have a clue. So what we're doing now, hopefully, is rectifying some of the mistakes that have been made in the past by kids graduating from high school and their choices were very limited. They're gonna go to the service, they're gonna go to the army. But now we're allowing these children to expand their minds. We're doing things that could improve, that could change generational wealth for families, simply because they had, they left high school with an idea of something that they wanted to do, that they were good at. Focused choice is a good thing, because for so long, I didn't think there was a focus on giving kids a choice.
Thank you. Are there any other comments from the board? Seeing none, we will entertain a vote. Please vote. Has it popped up for you? Hit it. Hit refresh and see if it'll... Motion carries. Thank you. Congratulations to the Capital High family. Item three, J.K. Haynes. Consideration of a request to accept the superintendent's recommendations regarding J.K. Haynes School. Such recommendation to begin in the 2023, 2024 school year and to include Alphabet A, setting a grade configuration for pre-kindergarten through 12. Alphabet B, creating a focused choice school program for a teacher academy in partnership with the Louisiana State University and Southern University. Additional contractual documents to be approved by the board. Alphabet C, authorizing staff to apply for a site code with the Louisiana Department of Education. Alphabet D, authorizing staff to enroll any students currently enrolled in J.K. Haynes Charter School. And Alphabet E, authorizing the location of J.K. Haynes School at its current site. Okay, is there a motion from the board? Okay. It has been moved by President Lannis and seconded by Mr. Gode. And is there a presentation for this particular item? Thank you, Ms. Porter.
So as it was introduced, the J.K. Haynes model will focus on a teaching model, a teaching academy, I should say. I want to just give you like a little overview about J.K. Haynes. It's been a direct charter-run school since 1997, and it was named in honor of Dr. John K. Haynes, who was a pioneer in sickle cell research and also worked with medical facilities. It is one of the oldest, was one of the oldest charter schools in the state. However, in 20, December 2022, J.K. Haynes surrendered their charter to the East Baton Rouge Parish School Board, um, to...
Excuse me, Ms. Porter, I'm sorry. If we could also ask the Haynes family to join you for the presentation?
Yes. Yes, yes.
Thank you.
Okay. Especially for this slide. So it was very important for me to recognize the wonderful work, uh, Dr. Haynes did for Baton Rouge and for the, uh, Scotlandville community. So for a moment, I am going to turn it over to Mr. Brickhouse, who will discuss the superintendent's recommendation.
All right, so. Consideration of a request to authorize J.K. Haynes to operate as a public school under the local education agency of East Baton Rouge Parish School System for the 2023, 2024 school year. We'll want to look at it in the, in the following five categories for five areas. Grade configuration. A grade configuration of pre-K 12, to make sure that the school system, a school operates secondary schools in grades six to 12. Also to establish an early childhood center that treats third and fourth grade students. Also maintain the current configuration to support the continuing, continuing, um, continuing programming for the, excuse me, for community learners that are already in J.K. Haynes. In addition, number two, looking at programming to operate a teacher training program in partnership with Louisiana State University and Southern University, as well as I stated earlier, to operate an early childhood center serving pre-K students, pre-K age students. Also to look at, and area three, to re, uh, site code authorization request, a request to reopen the J.K. Haynes site code as a district-run, non-charter school. And then fourth, attendance zone, to look at it as a non-dedicated attendance zone for which, uh, the student is, because the school's a focus choice school with admission. So the school is not going to have a dedicated attendance zone, but it will have a focus choice admission requirements. And finally, the location, the school will remain at the current location of 8600 Elm Grove Garden Drive in Baton Rouge, Louisiana.
Thank you, Mr. Brickhouse. So at this time, the Haynes family will come to the microphone.
Good evening. My name is Kimberly Haynes, and I'm the director of J.K. Haynes Charter Schools, and I stand here on behalf of my mother, Diana Haynes, who was one of the founders with my father, Maurice Haynes, um, the board of directors. And we are excited and eager to enter into this partnership. For those of you who don't know my grandfather, those of you who do know my grandfather know how tremendously powerful he was in the educational arena, and he was a huge, um, equal rights advocate for teachers of color, making sure that they had everything they needed to enable their scholars with the best of the best. Just a point of clarification, the Dr. Haynes that you referred to is my uncle, J.K. Haynes Jr., um, who is a professor at Morehouse College, so he would be happy to see that we were honoring him and his legacy. But my grand, he stands on the heels of, and the, the shoulders of my grandfather, J.K. Haynes, who was a huge educator in, um, the state of Louisiana. We just celebrated our 25th year anniversary. We're excited about 25 more years. We have a committed staff, some of which are here, and I would like to recognize those staff members and administrators who are here. Um, we are a family, and we are ready for the next 25 years in this, um, focus choice model, because I could not want my heart more to see that we are specifically gearing towards teaching and, um, leadership, and that's the pillars of what my grandfather was about. So we're excited about continuing the legacy of J.K. Haynes, and we're excited about this partnership. Thank you.
Thank you. I believe that we have, uh, representatives from, uh, Louisiana State University and Southern University as well in regards to this item, if you'd like to stand, and if you would like to give a comment, feel free.
Good afternoon, everyone. I'm Eugene Kennedy. I'm a professor in the School of Education at LSU, um, and associate dean for the college. And I just wanted to tell you that we are extremely excited about this partnership. My colleagues and I look forward to working with you, and certainly working with this family, uh, to make the school everything it needs to be. Thank you.
Thank you.
So just as the Capital, Capital High site, the focus choice model is based on a very small group of students, um, 50 per grade level. Eventually, it will, um, will phase in grades one at a time, and the sixth grade will, uh, be phased in, and I'm sorry, the sixth grade will attend, um, J.K. Haynes in the fall of 2023. So the teaching academy, as was mentioned, it is a way for Southern University and LSU to create a pipeline of teachers. Um, there's been discussion even about, you know, people, uh, paraprofessionals in, in the teaching field. Once again, the admission is open, you apply, and the purpose of the way the curriculum is set is to make, to help students explore options in, in the teaching field. So we're just basically trying to address a critical shortage. I know you possibly heard, it's all over the nation, we need teachers, we need bus drivers, we need, uh, people to come into our schools and who want to teach our students and teach them in a way that they will learn. And so that's what this, um, program is all about. So the alignment with LSU and Southern is designed to have people who are specialists in their field, like Dr. Eugene Kennedy and others, who will help us to build this program, um, this model.
Vice President Powell, can I also just recognize one other person? They would be like our secondary partners, Laura Vincent. Laura, is you in the back from Teach for America? We spoke to her as well, um, to help, kind of help support partnership. As you know, they've done a lot of work across the country, and so we want to, there's a lot of resources we have in Baton Rouge, and we're trying to capitalize as we create an opportunity to create more teachers in our pipelines. Just wanted to recognize you there.
Thank you. So, um, the timeline is very similar to the one I shared before. What we are, what our plans are, is to make sure that parents know that this process will take place and to educate them on what the intent of the focus choice school is. And then if, for some reason, they decide, and which we hope they'll stay at J.K. Haynes, that there are other options in the East Baton Rouge Parish School System. One thing I failed to mention is because, uh, spreading your footprints, when you are implementing a new program is very important. So we have plans to launch a focus fest, and I know this sounds like something in the fall, but this is, we'll have this planned in May, in an area where we can, um, promote the focus choice model and to help parents understand that this is a choice option that their children, their children may be interested in. And, um, the last thing is that this camp will be focused on teaching and learning. So once again, exploratory, once again, to get students acclimated to what the program is going to be about and the expectations thereof. Eric Johnson will discuss this current student population.
Good evening again. Okay, so, uh, J.K. Haynes doesn't have an attendant zone, it's a charter school, it pulls from all over. So the first, uh, piece of data that I provided here shows the number of students in, uh, each of the attendant zones, and as you can see, they, they come from all over the parish to attend this school. A second piece of data that I provided is the, uh, the feeder pattern data. In total, there are currently 780 students choosing to leave the Scotlandville feeder patterns family of schools to attend to other schools throughout the district. So we're hoping that this focus choice will help keep some of those kids a little bit closer to home and giving them, uh, another opportunity instead of having to, to travel across town to get, so another, another good choice.
As Mr. Brickhouse mentioned earlier, uh, one of the, several of the items that we are, um, focusing on is the site, um, a sponsored site for the Louisiana Department of Education, and also to, um, the facility. And then finally, um, requesting that when the schools, when the school is reopened as a Baton Rouge school, that we have a new site code for, um, J.K. Haynes. Ready for questions, if there are any?
Thank you, Ms. Porter. So, uh, we will continue with our comments from our board and possibly questions, and I, I was kind of hoping to be the last, but you know, this, this, this idea makes me super excited. My absolute passion, of course, in life is helping teachers to be better teachers. Um, also, I want to say that J.K. Haynes has been a pillar in our community for a very, very long time. These ladies, Ms. Ms. Haynes and the other Ms. Haynes, knows that, I've shared with them before, how I, when my son was in elementary school, I always wanted to try to get him in that school, he was always on a waiting list. But, um, I knew of their, their history and also the, the exemplary teaching that went on at that school. So I think that it's definitely a testament to their family, a testament of our community as well. And then, uh, also just to share, as we continue to prepare for this school, um, in seeing that there are organizations such as Educators Rising that allow for, uh, a platform for students to work towards becoming teachers. Um, there's also another university that I would love for us to include in this process, and that would be Reach University. So Reach University does assist with online programming for, uh, paraprofessionals to work towards becoming teachers. So I hope that we will also engage in conversations with them as well. Thank you so much.
You're welcome. Mr. Lanis.
Thank you, Madam Vice President. Well, first, I have to obviously acknowledge the Hayes family. You all have not, as she just said, been pillars inside of this community. The school has done phenomenal things for a lot of families and helped a lot of people grow and become productive citizens. So that goes without saying that we tip our hats to you and thank you for entering into this phenomenal endeavor, uh, with our school system. However, I did want to address something because there's been a lot of concerns placed around GPA standards and things of that nature. What I would say is this, when you think about academics, there has to be rigor that matches what we expect from our students. And for anybody who does not know what rigor is, I just want to give a, a quick, uh, blurb. Rigor, or academic rigor, rather, refers to a certain standard of excellence that teachers and administrators expect from their students. Examples of this is students learning more, producing research-based projects, reading more in-depth, and taking harder tests. The state is always going to lift the expectation for every student because we are almost last in the country. If we don't set the standard as the capital city, what we expect from our students, and everybody around the state follows our lead, that says a lot about us. We have to push the totem pole. We have to push our students. Having a competitive edge inside of classrooms is not a bad thing, because I can guarantee you this, as the parents we serve around this community, there's a reason why they're searching for better options, because they want, they expect their students to have more and learn more inside of our school system. I always say this, and I'll end right here on this. The single biggest investment a parent can give us is their child. We give them a return on investment by pushing them to excel and go further than they have ever imagined in their lives. I saw this for myself when I was in school. I got to go to some of the highest performance schools when I was in elementary in my foundational years. When I got to middle school, that changed, because I wanted to go to school with my friends, whereas my mom wanted me to go to the better school, which at the time was the highest performing middle school in the city. That's where you understand the challenges when you start to push back against rigor. For me, I want the best for every single child that walks through our buildings, that walk through our schools, and I know our board does too, and that's what we're going to continue to push towards, adding rigor that adds benefit not only to our students' lives, but to their families. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Russ?
I'm, I'm, I'm good. Thank you.
Mr. Lewis?
Again, I want to say thank you to the Haynes family. I'm not from Baton Rouge, but J.K. Haynes was the first time I've ever heard of a charter school. When I moved here, I knew nothing about charter schools. But there was always J.K. Haynes. And you talked about your grandfather. And him being a pioneer and, and being someone who understood how important it was to educate African-American children, all children, but African-American children in particular. I want to say something, and I, I kind of want to frame my comment in, in, in this historical content. In January 2000, then-President Bill Clinton gave his final State of the Union address, and he addressed 21st century Americans. And he said that he would hope that every child started school ready to learn, and kids graduated from high school ready for success. That was in 2000. This is 2023, and we're still trying to figure out how to get there. In doing so, the gentleman in the back, Mr. Kelly, I think, from LSU? Kennedy, I'm sorry. This is going to be a teacher school. Kids don't learn the way they did in the past. They're wired different. Teachers can't teach the way they did in the past. So you have a tremendous opportunity at this school to change the way we educate children completely. You have an opportunity to look at these children and look at the things that make them unique and educate them around their uniqueness. And don't use measuring tools that are designed to educate people that they don't look like, act like, or grow up like. This is a wonderful opportunity for this city and for every child who enters J.K. Haynes, the new J.K. Haynes, whether they're black, white, English learners, it doesn't matter. We have a great opportunity to do something great in a building named after a man who saw greatness. Now, I didn't know your grandfather, okay? But I guarantee you, he had a vision for greatness far beyond anything that, that, that you've reached so far. Thank you for what you're doing, and much success. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Kennison?
Um, what is the school performance score for J.K. Haynes? Do we have that information, the letter grade?
Do you have it on you, Mr. Eric? I do not have that on me, Ms. Kennison, but we can...
Can we look it up on the internet, perhaps?
We can look it up. Just give us one minute. I think, Ms. Jones, are you taking a look? And are you asking for the SPS or the letter grade?
One coordinates with the other, right? Both, then?
We're just verifying before we tell you.
Sure. Perhaps the last three years, if they're all, if we're looking at several years, let's look at the last three. It's in a magazine somewhere, right? Yeah. It's lots, it's in lots of places. I just don't know it. In the charter report? Do we have that?
I could tell you this in the interim. In 2018, 2019, it was a D. I know following that, uh, we had COVID, so that would have been a blanketous score, and it would have carried over. would have carried over, and that would have been another D. This next year, we did simulated scores, right? And that wouldn't have counted anyways, but I can't tell you what it is for this year.
And let's just look at this year.
All right.
Well, while we're waiting, I'll go ahead and just complete my, my thought, assuming that it's not an A or B or C. Several weeks ago, we, we committed hundreds of students to stay at a failing school, to stay at a school that's not properly educating our children. And the way charters work, from what I understand, if, if, if we're not doing right by our children, then, and we can't improve the school, then they should go to a school that, that they can get a proper education. And it's nothing against your school by any means, or the people in it. It's about the children that are there. And so we, we missed that chance to do right by the kids a few weeks ago, assuming whatever this letter grade comes back, as we have a chance to, to kind of make up for that a little bit and make sure kids are taken care of. I know that there's talk of, you know, sweeping huge changes, but we, that's, that's convenient to talk about, but we know that change happens slowly. That's all. I'm just waiting for the, for the answer. Is that correct? It's an F? Okay. It's an F. Let's keep that in mind. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Kennison. Any additional comments from the board? Okay, Mr. Godey.
Yeah, I, I just want to make sure everyone's clear. The school that the history we've just been talking about is the charter school. That charter school has turned in its charter, and we will be reconstituting that school using the same name but with a totally different site code, with totally different programming. And I'm praying that we're going to have totally different results. So basically, the charter school that had the score of an F will cease to exist. And, not basically, actually. And then the, a school carrying, and we're going to still have to go through the process of naming the school, of course, I know what, I know what the answer is going to come out to be, but that school is starting brand-new, starting all over again. And so the main reason we're doing this is, A, we needed to do something with a school that was in trouble, but then, B, we continually get hit about what are you doing about teacher shortage? And this is one of the few things that we really can do about trying to do the, work on the teacher shortage by encouraging more people and making it easier for people to go into the teaching profession. And more importantly, like my colleague, Mr. Lewis, talked about, just exposing them to the possibilities of a career as an educator, like Ms. Powell and, and other, Ms. Lanis was also an educator, and others on this board. So I think, I think that's the whole thing we're going through, and the whole thing we're talking about here, is starting fresh, starting with a brand-new school, and, and doing these things. And we're not consigning kids to a failing school. We're taking over a failing school and trying to make it much, much better. So I just didn't want anyone to be confused about, we were just taking over a failing charter. We're not. We're taking over a school, and we're going to run it as a traditional school with a Focus Choice model. Now, I do have one question on, go ahead, sir.
I just wanted to give some information that was requested. The current SPS grade is an F. In 2020, the year that we, the grades didn't count, it was, would have been a D, and the year before that, 20, I think it's 2019, was also a D.
I lost my train of thought. It's heckling, oh. My question is, as we do these schools, and particularly the elementary schools, I know the advisory board will be coming back with recommendations, but typically, and I'm not saying this is where it's going to be here, but typically, the elementary schools have not had retention components to it, and the retention components really kick in around seventh grade or sixth grade or something like that. So I don't want anyone to think that we're making a third grader sit there and say, hey, you got to make this grade if you want to stay in this school. So I, I don't want that to get into the conversation in any way, shape, or form.
If I could just add to what you said, what I'm going to go to, you're exactly right. Not only reconstitute, but also remember that the difference in the model also is the partnership with education directly with the LSU School of Education, Southern University School of Education, other partners that will help work through the entire teaching design. The key difference in these models is the programming. I know we talk a lot about the grades and those things, but when you look at the type of programming that happens in school, it makes a major difference on how children are performing. I will go back and use the Park Elementary. When I, remember, we, we took Park, and people said, oh, Park's not going to do good. Well, the programming and the education happened has changed. That's why that progress has happened. We look at all of the schools that have made that, what's happening in those classrooms, and the shifts, and additional supports make a tremendous difference. And so I would, I would share with the public, it is no different in terms of that support structure with the learning that happens. And, and we do appreciate, I remember when we started having our conversation with the Hayes family, you know, we did have conversations about how do we make it better, and how do we partner with that, and how do we work with the teachers and the leaders there? And so I just wanted to say, you know, a part of this work is, is not in a sum of all zeros in schools. It's about continuous improvement and how the partnership. We have tremendous schools where we're bringing with the right partners, the right development, the right supports, they, they do well. And that has been very clear when you look at many of our schools that have succeeded in our portfolio, a set of schools where our job is to raise that quality for every school in, in the entire system, regardless of who they are. And I think that we are on the right track for that. So I just wanted to share that. And I want to also thank the Hayes family, because when we started to have this conversation, one of the things we were clear about was wanting to make sure that school not only does well in terms of the teaching that happens in the school, but also the quality. I mean, we do need teachers, but we also need to be able to continue to build the progress in our system.
Thank you, Mr. Martin.
Thank you, Madam Vice President. I, I support this, this program. I'm, I'm glad that we have an opportunity to continue the, the name of J.K. Haynes. He's obviously a, a very important person who had a great vision, and, and I'm glad we can continue to honor that. I do want to note for the record that even though this has got some involvement with LSU, it's got nothing to do with my office or my agency within LSU. So I, I don't believe that I'm required under the, under the ethics code to recuse myself from this particular vote, although I will be recusing myself from a later vote today. So, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, comments from the public. Ms. Corley?
Karonda Corley, parent and disabilities advocate. I can't say enough about J.K. Haynes Charter School. I had the pleasure of knowing the Jake, the family and the vision that they had when they started the school, and the vision of how it was, how it actually was implemented. Part of how they lost their enrollment was when Elm Grove Apartments closed down. The apartments was condemned. And so that more than 80-unit apartment complex actually dispersed families out throughout Baton Rouge City. So when we talk about this school and what this family has done, there is nothing, nothing that I can say that will measure up to the wonderful things they have done. When I say this school actually provide every single child with their school supplies and their book stacks, this school has provided every single family member with supports and resources. This is what a school is supposed to be about. The only thing the school did not have was all the funding that they needed to have to have programming for all the children to benefit. But when we talk about inclusion and making sure that children with disabilities are not segregated, this school lives it every single day. See, you had to know Mr. J.K. Haynes, and Mr. Maurice Haynes, Ms. Diane Haynes, Kim Haynes, Orin Haynes. You have to know that family to know that they don't believe in segregation in any shape or form. And to know that family is to love every single person that walks this earth, whether they go into heaven or hell. You have to know that this family really and truly love, and they exuberate love, and they make sure that every child there, every staff member there, know that they are loved, know that they are there to make a difference. That is what a school is supposed to be about. That is why I actually speak in support of J.K. Haynes returning back, returning back as a charter that is going to build future educators, because education and being an educator is a calling. That's a calling. It's a real, true ministry. And that school, there's no other school that I can think of that can do it better than J.K. Haynes. So please, bring them back, keep them, give them any and every support that they need, because they actually have every single thing that a school should have and then some. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Corley. Judge Johnson.
Pamela Taylor Johnson, and thank you for an opportunity to speak here. J.K. Haynes, I just have to shout to the mountaintop. J.K. Haynes was a educator among educators. He was not only just an educator, but also he was a teacher advocate. He believed in advocating for teachers and advocating for children, not just black children, brown children, all children, all teachers. That's who J.K. Haynes was. And I just am so grateful that I got an opportunity to, to sit at his feet and learn from him, and even be his lawyer, represent him in different situations. And, and the highest honor that I think we can do in this state is to name a school that would be a feeder for a teacher education program, and, and a charter, school, and, you know, men charters, okay? But that charter school was a real, what we call real charter schools. It was nothing entrepreneur about it. It was about educating children in a different method, a different process, by taking the whole child, which included holistically, which included that family, and doing what you do. It's been said by Ms. Corley, you, it's just was a matter of resources. And that's what it is now. If you bothered to take a visit over there and see what they're doing with those children, with what they have over there, it's most amazing. So with this process, and with EBR, becoming a part of EBR, probably that would include improving facilities. Probably it will. But the teacher education program, let me tell you, that, when you talk about an educator, oh, you're talking about the good old days, and we're not talking about the mega-good old days. I'm talking about the real deal, where you had people who were interested in educating children regardless of where they were. So to have a program for this parish named for J.K. Haynes, hallelujah, and thank you very much. And I pray that you all, all vote to this. And, and, you know, my school board member, what you're accusing yourself, I hope it doesn't defeat the vote, because I see that Shoshone just left. Thank you.
Okay, seeing no other comments from the public, returning to comments from the board. And as of right now, my name is in the queue, so I just wanted to share, number one, sometimes we have to realize that within our communities, that an SPS score cannot be the only reason why we visit or revisit the need for our school. When I mentioned that I wanted my son to attend J.K. Haynes, it was because I had seen the reading level of the students be amazing, in the fact that they could read and comprehend at higher levels than other schools around me. They were also offering services like cursive writing that did not exist in other places. And I went on a search for that, like I said, as my child was on the waitlist. But those are things, those are just two facets of why they were such an amazing school, even if they were a D, even if they were an F. My question is, I don't know why they were, you know? I have not done that level of research. But sometimes those different tenants can also be balanced with soft skills that are needed to help our kids to be successful in the community. If we think about our own selves, elementary, middle, high school, how many of us can say that we did not attend a school that had a low performance score? Yet, we're up here. So that's something to think about. The other is, I know that my comment in regards to Capital High School and the idea of the GPA requirement. For me, there's no reason why a school that is not a magnet school should have a higher retention GPA than a magnet school. So if, if we're going to request 2.8 or higher as a retention GPA for a Focus Choice school, then we need to increase the GPA retention score or GPA retention requirements for a magnet school as well. So I just simply wanted to share those two things. I'm still super excited. I keep telling you, I'm a teacher at heart. I'm planning to be that until I die. And so the idea, the idea of having a school that's devoted to a career path that usually is forgotten, although we're the ones who prepare all the other professions, I am super excited about this opportunity, and I know that the best is yet to come, even for J.K. Haynes. Thank you. Mr. Godey?
Yes, thank you. Just a quick question about facilities. I'm not intimately aware of all the details around J.K. Haynes School. Could someone address, is that, is that an EBR site that they're in, or how, how is the facilities with us taking over a charter school? How's the, how does that all work out?
So Randy Morales, would you mind coming up?
And particularly, who owns it today?
Good afternoon. Yes, it is an EBR site that we own. They're housing that site at this time, but once we take it back over, then it's ours to update and get it ready for next school year.
Okay, that, that was my only question. I just wanted to make sure we weren't setting ourselves up for purchase of buildings or anything like that. Thank you very much.
Any other comments from the board? Okay, we will enter into a vote. The motion carries. Item four, BR Flame Classroom Expansion. Consideration of a request for the approval of the design and construction of a four-classroom expansion at BR Flame. Strategic Alignment, Student Achievement, Funding Source, General Fund. Is there a motion? Okay, it has been moved by Mr. Baloo. Is there a second? It has been seconded by Mr. Lewis. We now have comments from the board. Mr. Godey?
Seems like it's my night to make comments. Just a quick question, a couple of quick questions on this. One, I got some questions from a few parents that talked about, were there any public or any parent meetings or anything held regarding this with?
Dr. Moore, and you can come up, Principal McBride as well. I'm sorry, Principal McBride, you're the one over BR Flame. Sorry about that, Dr. Moore.
Yeah, I was going, wait, Dr. Moore is not-
I'm a little tired.
I mean, I'd be answering his opinion, but I don't think he's got the answer.
You're BR CVP, I'm sorry about that. CVP, sorry about that.
Right, we did have the first meeting with, in conjunction with our PTO meeting and Dr. Griffin and Ms. Wright and Ms. Aguilar were there. They discussed the program and the pre-K. And we were waiting also because we didn't have the vote till March, so we didn't want to jump the gun on something that we didn't have to offer. So right now, we're going with the additional pre-K classes and that's what the renovation is going to do.
Okay.
We'll be able to move some children upstairs so we can have pre-K downstairs.
Okay, and on the building side of the pre-K downstairs, pre-K's got some specific requirements.
Right.
And that's what, is that also going to be taken care of in this amount of money?
We've had several meetings with architects and with the.
Mr. Morales.
Mr. Morales and Ms. Balding. And so, and we have one coming up, I think, next week.
Okay, thank you. I was just trying to make sure the I's are dotted and T's crossed through all the things.
Because there are some things that, especially the three-year-old pre-K, that they'll be doing some changes, but we have that one covered downstairs.
Okay.
And Mr. Godey, just for the record, I just wanted to make sure we're public about this. We have been lockstep in key with the school leaders on every step. Is that correct, Principal McBride? So, so we just did not want to get too far ahead. So we've had conversations where we would share stuff.
Okay, thank you very much.
Okay.
Yeah, and Mr. Godey, so just for the record, not only did we check with pre-K and their requirements, but also like food service and all those support staffs to say, hey, we're bringing this on, how is this going to impact your department so that way we can serve them?
Right, we're going to have to increase our two cafeteria lines and things like that for the number of childrens. Children's, I guess it is late.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
All right, Mr. Lewis.
Short and sweet. If anybody in this city deserves a new building, it's Flame. From. Oh, yeah, he's tough. He can handle it. Well, whatever they, whatever we can do for you, it needs to be done. I remember from down on East Boulevard to, you know, you guys need, you guys need whatever you can get. Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Lewis. Are there any other comments from the board? Ms. Kennison.
Did we get other bids for architects? Did we get other bids for the work?
Mr. Morales.
So, no, this architect's on indefinite delivery and they'll go off of the state fee schedule.
State fee schedule? For each individual item, there's a fee schedule?
For your professional services, for your architect, all your architects get paid the same across the state.
I need to become a painter then because?
Not, no, not, not construction. That, so the bid?
I understand, I understand. I'm making a joke.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, it's $33,000 to paint the space, so I'm, I gotta go, guys. I gotta put my paint. Okay, thank you.
Okay, we now move to comments from the public. Ms. Matthews.
I am not against the renovations. So many of our schools are falling apart. I do want to be leery about fixing up schools outside of the tax plan, especially when you have schools such as mine who have, one of our classrooms, the wall is falling down. Our school was built in the Cold War and has not had a single renovation outside of the student office that was built, I guess for shooters. But we've had no renovations. We're up in the tax plan in 2028 and that's like to get a fence on the outside again for active shooting situations, but not a true renovation. You have schools that are, that are falling apart and they had a renovation, like what, five years ago? I understand adding children, but we have so many schools that don't have roofs. The walls are falling down. We have holes in our outdoor walls where the wasps just come in constantly and bee stings cause, you know, major, major allergic reactions. I mean, we just have so many things that think we should be sticking to the tax plan. I'm not opposed to this. It's been discussed, it's been on the plan, but I think moving forward, we need to stick to the tax plan and make sure that our dollars are being used in that order.
Thank you. Okay, seeing no further comments from the public, moving back to comments from the board, Mr. Lanis.
Yes, thank you, Madam Vice President. I'm actually glad you made that comment, Ms. Matthews, because contrary, I actually think a little bit differently. I think that we have to reimagine how we look at the tax plan because we have projects just like yours. I'll give you an example. Over the course of the last few weeks or the last month, I had an opportunity because school board member Russ invited me out into his district and I viewed two of his schools, one of which is one of the highest performing schools in East Baton Rouge Parish, which is Shenandoah Elementary. Yet that school has not had any renovations since it has been built. In fact, they have like six T-b buildings and they're literally falling apart. When we walk those T-b buildings, certain areas on the floor, if you press down too hard, you can almost fall through them. Some of them, you have AC units that are out. Now, obviously, they're being maintained from the district's point of view, but there's only so long you can keep doing temporary fixes. And this is the reason why I have not only been meeting and talking to other board members to see what their propensity is around revisiting the tax plan, but also talking to the superintendent and making a request that we go back before the oversight committee so that we can see, is there any room for us to make some smaller level adjustments so that we can fix the things that you're talking about? Now, we're talking about reworking the tax plan to just fix one whole entire school? No. But we are talking about smaller projects. If there's a school in a classroom where the ceiling is falling in or the walls are falling apart, that's something that needs to be addressed. So if there's a situation where the floor may have some problems and it's a continuous concern and we just keep spending money on temporary fixes, that's what, those are the types of things that we need to try to see, is there room for us to reimagine what the tax plan looks like so that we can cover more of our schools? I just want you to know that I hear your concerns. I absolutely do. And I'm not saying that we go outside the scope of the tax plan. I say we can still stay aligned to what it is that we already voted on, but I do think that there is some tweaks we can make so that we can fill in some of those smaller projects and that it's not coming out of our general fund. But amazing comment, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Martin.
Thank you. Mr. Morales, could you come up, please? This is my, this is the first time, I think, in the past two months that we've actually voted on a, on a real construction contract, so I just want to get some clarity from myself and following up on Ms. Kennison's questions. So the, the, you know, right now, we've got name of vendors Coleman Partners Architecture and then TBD because the actual construction work will be bid out. Correct. So this $1.6 million that's there, that's the estimate of both the architecture fee for Coleman Partners and the actual construction cost that will be awarded through a competitive bid.
Correct.
So all those prices for the painting and whatnot are all estimates right now?
Correct. And I'm sorry, I apologize because I thought about after the fact, I should have put the state fee calculator that I used to get the A and E fees also in that as backup documentation. And I'll do that next time. I'll do, I'll do better next time, so sorry about that.
No, that's fine. The architects, you're right, the architects get paid what the architects get paid on state projects, public projects. That's just what it is. We don't have any option around that. So, and then my question is either for the superintendent or Mr. Shamlin. So will, will, will the actual construction contract after the bid process come back to us? Do we have to vote on that? Or is this, is this all the authorization necessary for that contract to be signed?
Generally, we'll bring those contracts back to the board. Yes, sir.
Okay, then we'll see, because it's always possible.
With the recommendation, woman Martin. When, when they go through the bid process, the R and P, then we'll, we'll make a recommendation.
Right, right, yeah.
But the board ultimately gets to decide on.
Right, we're not sitting there evaluating all the different bids that are received. Y'all, the professionals will do that and say, hey, this is the, this is the, the best bid. And so we'll get that. Because it's always possible that, that the architects just misestimated and it's, it's not at all unheard of for the bids to come back higher than the project budget was. And so we'll, we'll revisit the issue at that time and determine what to do whenever those bids come back.
And typically, I try to provide a safe number so that way we don't go over budget so that way I tell you, hey, it's 1.6, but then it comes back 2 million, you go, hold up. We're way off. Where did we miss the mark? So we try to get as close as possible and build in a little contingency. This contingency built in here too for any overages that were, are unexpected.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Right, and I waive my opportunity to speak. Are there any other comments from the board at this time? Okay, seeing none, we will enter into a vote.
Please vote.
Thank you. Item five, agreements. Graduations. Consideration of a request for the approval of an agreement between the East Baton Rouge Parish School Board and the following. Alphabet A, Southern University, in the amount of $34,175 for the rental of the F.G. Clark Mini Dome for high school graduations. Alphabet B, Louisiana State University, in the amount of $66,600 for the rental of the Pete Maravick Assembly Center for high school graduations. Strategic Alignment Operational Excellence Funding Source General Fund. Is there a motion? Okay, it has been moved by Mr. Russ. Is there a second? Okay, and it has been seconded by Mr. Blue. Thank you. So entering into comments from the board, Mr. Martin.
Thank you. I just want to know for the record that I'm not going to participate in this transaction. I'm not going to discuss it or vote on it and I will also not be participating on the LSU side either. Somebody from my staff will do this because I am in charge at LSU of the facility use agreements that allow outsiders, non-LSU people to use space. So this is right within my office and so I won't be participating on either side of the deal.
Thank you. Any other comments from the board? Mr. Lanis.
Thank you, Madam Vice President. I'll be really quick. I'll just say that I like this particular item for several reasons, one of which is I think all students deserve to graduate after going through four years of matriculation through high school. They all deserve to graduate using facilities that are, one, up to speed, two, that look amazing and have the space and capacity to fit their families inside. Many of our high schools do not have that and many of them cannot afford to pay for a Southern University or LSU type of facility on their own. So I, I like the fact that we're moving in this direction for our high schools and our students because they deserve that at the end of the day on their graduation day.
Thank you. Okay, and I have one question about wording. If that, you, I guess you guys can tell me if there needs to be a substitute motion, but the official name for the Southern University facility is the F.G. Clark Activity Center.
That's correct.
Or Felton G. Clark Activity Center.
Make it a friendly amendment.
Okay, so.
You can't do it, I do it.
Okay, and then the other is the Pete Maravick Assembly Center. It says Peter on the wording.
Can I offer a friendly amendment to Mr. Nathan Russ and Coach Lewis? I'm sorry, Mark, Mr., school board member Mark Blue. The friendly amendment would be that we change the wording or language in the, in consideration or recommended action to F.G. Clark Activity Center and Pete Mavrich. Mavrich. Maravich. I'm just butchering names tonight, y'all. Work with me. Assembly Center.
I'll accept that.
Mavrich, right?
Only if you can say Maravich.
Maravich, okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, any other comments from the board? Okay, comments from the public. Comments from the public. Ms. Matthews.
Didn't y'all miss me for those three board meetings? Okay, so I just have one thing that was from parents, mostly of girls, last year. The 9:00 AM graduations, ladies and their hair and their makeup. Apparently, girls don't do their makeup anymore. They have appointments and they go get their makeup done. I do not know anything about this. I don't wear makeup very often. But hair appointments and makeup appointments, the girls were really upset because they had to do their own hair and makeup. So if you could, I know this seems trivial to, to us, but this is a big deal for these kids who have worked very hard for these graduations. So if we could look into possibly, I don't know if those colleges can work with us to bring that time up from 9:00 AM, but if we can look into that and maybe adjust that for these girls to work with them, I think they would really, really appreciate that from us.
Thank you. Unless things have changed, Ms. Matthews, yes, they can have evening graduations and I completely concur with the idea of having to get my hair and makeup done. That's why I look like this today. All right. Okay, and seeing no other comments from the public, we are returning to comments from the board. Seeing none, we will entertain a vote.
Please vote.
Thank you. Moving into item six, policy revisions. Consideration of a request for the approval of the following school board policy revisions and related matters. Alphabet A, GBRIBC COVID Leave and Alphabet B, GBRIBB Sick Leave Bank. These two items are being presented by Mr. Russ and Mr. Blue. Is there a motion? It has been moved by Mr. Russ and seconded by Mr. Lanis. Okay, comments from the board. Okay, Mr. Martin.
I would like to ask a couple of questions of Ms. Hall. Is there going to be a presentation on, on either of these items from staff or, or should I ask my question now?
There's not one attached.
Okay, so there is no presentation attached?
Okay.
Is there a present? Okay.
All right, so Ms. Hall, if, if I could, on, on the issue of the sick leave bank, could you explain to us why, you know, kind of the rationale for the policies regarding the use of this special sick leave? And, you know, for example, why can't this be used intermittently under the policy says it, it can't be? And then why does it have to be kind of given back at the end of the, of the year? Could you explain that for us?
Hello, everyone. I'm sorry, I had to pull the mic up because I'm a little taller than most people. So this is a really cool idea, a sick bank, because things happen, right? Life happens and it's cool to have, I would say, a savings where you could go to for assistance. I'm fully supportive of this type of policy. So an intermittent leave, or we call it a reduced leave schedule, that is within the FMLA. So if you changed a sick bank policy, you would also have to amend the FMLA policy to reflect the intermittent leave, which is part of the FMLA policy. Am I making sense? I hope I am. Okay, so the FMLA policy, you know, you have to work for 1,250 hours or maybe 12 months within that year to, 12, 12 months is within a year, I am tired, 1,250 hours or 12 months, whichever comes first. And this is used for family members or yourself if you're ill. And that is only 20% of your working days. So if you're a nine-month employee, it's 20% that you're able to utilize. If you're a 12-month employee, 20% of that. So it's, it's two separate policies. So if you amend one and you want to include it in, in the intermittent leave, you would have to amend an intermittent leave policy to make sure that you have the same language on both ends. Does that make sense? Hopefully you could help me counsel.
Thank you. Madam Vice President, as a point of order, if, what point is it appropriate for me to ask that we separate these out? Because I have a, I have, I have separate feelings about, about each of them.
You can do that now. You could make a, there's a motion on the floor?
Yes.
So it would be a substitute motion to bifurcate the item if you would choose to do that.
I'd like to make a substitute motion to bifurcate this, this item at this time.
Okay, so.
Oh, yeah.
No, it's a substitute motion.
So it has been moved by Mr. Martin and seconded by Ms. Kennison that we enter into a substitute motion to bifurcate item six, separating Alphabet A, the COVID Leave, from Alphabet B, the Sick Leave Bank. Okay, we will now into, enter into comments from the board. Okay, Mr. Russ, are you, you're still interested in speaking, correct?
This, this is about the substitute motion?
Yes.
Then no.
Okay, Mr. Lanis?
No, you can take it.
Okay, all right. Any other comments from the board about the substitute motion? Okay, comments from the public about the substitute motion? Okay, comments from the board about the substitute motion? Okay, let us enter into a vote in regards to the substitute motion of bifurcating Alphabet A from Alphabet B for item six, dealing with COVID Leave, separating it from Sick Leave Bank. Can you all give us just a minute? Of course, they have to type this information out.
Please vote. The motion carries.
Thank you. Okay, so we will now, we will now address item six, Alphabet A, consideration of a request for the approval of the following school board policy revisions and related matters: Alphabet A, GBRIBC COVID Leave. Is there a motion on the floor? Okay, all right. It has been moved by Mr. Russ and seconded by Mr. Martin, and we will now enter into comments from the board. Mr. Russ.
Okay, so the intent of this motion is to help those of our employees this year that have experienced, unfortunately, coming down with COVID, and to extend additional leave to those people who, unfortunately, also contracted it a second time in the same year, which has happened. My question, which I failed to ask Ms. Hall before we, we put this forward to the board, if Ms. Hall, if you could, could I ask you a quick question? Yeah, so those employees who may have already been diagnosed twice with COVID, and that has already occurred this year, would this policy be able to compensate them if they, for instance, had to take sick leave? Could they use those COVID days instead, say if three weeks ago they had COVID and had to take leave?
Yeah, so it depends on the retroactive date.
Okay.
So if you, if the board approves on a retroactive date, yes, I'll make it-
Is that in our, our policy that's attached to this? Is that date in the revision?
Yes.
Okay.
So, yes, that is correct.
Thank you.
Yes. Just a lot, a little more work for us, but we love to take our time.
It is appreciated.
Yes, of course.
Thank you. Are there any additional comments from the board? Okay, comments from the public. Ms. Matthews.
I got confused with Mr. Russ's comment. Which one are we on right now? COVID, okay. I just want to say thank you so, so much for bringing this. I have had so many employees, bus drivers, and teachers contacting me that have gotten COVID for a second time. I know that we hassled you guys, or the previous board members in, in August, telling you we were going to need this, we were going to need this, we were going to need this, and Board Member Howard said we could revisit it. Here we are. Thank you so very much. I really appreciate it being retroactive. I know there's going to be a lot of work on you guys, but I really appreciate this because so many people have been out with it. So I just, I really want to thank Mr. Russ for bringing it and Ms. Hall for doing it, and I just wanted to say thank you.
Thank you. Okay, seeing no additional comments from the public, we return to comments from the board, and this is simply in regards to the COVID Leave, Alphabet A of item six. Okay, seeing none, let us enter into a vote for Alphabet A of item six regarding COVID Leave.
Please vote. The motion carries.
Thank you. We're now moving into item six, Alphabet B, consideration of a request for the approval of the following school board policy revisions and related matters: Alphabet B, GBRIBB Sick Leave Bank. Is there a motion? Okay, it has been moved by Mr. Baloo. Is there a second? And it has been seconded by Mr. Lanis. Okay, we're now entering into comments from the board. Mr. Baloo.
Yeah, I just wanted to explain what this, what I brought originally was, I thought, a small change to the existing sick leave, the sick leave donation policy where an employee could utilize the donated days prior to using short-term leave. That was the intent, to have staff investigate that possibility. I don't know if this does that or not, but because there's no, I guess my question is, the new poli, is this a brand-new policy, or is this a change? Because I don't see the, the changes on there. It looks like almost all-new wording.
Yes, sir. The document uploaded does have the changes. Normally, the changes are tracked, you can see, and for whatever reason, it didn't take when we uploaded this particular document. My understanding, and I'll let Ms. Hall help me out with this one, but my understanding is that, at your request, I believe, the primary change to this policy is to allow for donations to an individual employee versus the sick bank. That was the big change, if I remember the request. There are also a few other changes having to do with, and I have to cheat and look at my memo, intermittent use, I think, was a question that came up in, in the initial offering of this, which we'll let Ms. Hall address, and that the return of that, that leave to the sick bank, not the individual, at the end of the year. And I'll let Ms. Hall speak to it if she wants to say anything additional.
Mr. Shamlin, I love you. So, yes, the intermittent leave, you would have to change the policy on both ends to be consistent. So if you would like to include the usage of sick bank and intermittent leave, you would have to change the policy to make sure on both ends the language is clear. So that is where I stand. I'm not a, I'm not a legal person or a policy person, per se, but I would recommend that we change both ends to make sure we're being consistent.
Okay, so the only change right now is that it allows the donation to an individual employee?
To an individual versus a bank, yes.
Okay.
Yeah, and one additional comment, I believe it also allows you to use that leave before completely exhausting-
Correct.
-your other leave options.
Right, so that is, and that's also the policy item. So, the goal, I would say, if you're going to approve this, which I think is super awesome, because we believe in employee well-being, right, and we want to take care of our employee, and God knows, we can't lose anymore, please. So, we would also would like to go back and review the actual FMLA policy that we have on the books to make sure that we're consistent with whatever we're doing across the board. That would be my only recommendation.
All right, well, that answered my question. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Mr. Martin.
Thank you. I, I, yeah, I don't think I fully- There we go. I don't think I fully appreciated that this was just making a relatively, an important but modest tweak to the existing language. Nevertheless, I think it was raised by a member of the public at a recent meeting, that why, when we have an employee who is severely ill, to the point that they've exhausted all of their existing sick leave, why do we rely on the generosity of our other employees in order to help that person? I think it's wonderful that we have the mechanism to do that. I, I would like to, to that end, though, I would like to make a substitute motion that we, that we approve the, the change as written, but with the further addition that, that we request that the superintendent study the matter, the possibility of creating a, a new special category of sick leave that would, that would apply and be available to employees in the same circumstances in which they can resort to the leave bank and, and report back to us in two or three months, in, let's say, three months, on, on whether that's possible or not, and what the financial implications that would have on the system would be.
Okay, before we go any further, did you get all of that wording?
So, Mr. Martin, you're making a substitute motion, is that correct?
Yes, and, and, Ms. Armin, I texted you some approximation of that language a minute ago. If it went through, the cell reception in here, of course, is notoriously spotty.
Just for clarity, once you receive that, April, if you could read it for us.
And, Mr. Shamlin, if you can help me on the fly with the wording, I'd appreciate it.
All right, so, Mr. Shamlin, if you could re, read the substitute motion to us, please.
I could, before we do that, could I, could I maybe offer, after talking to my colleague next to me, perhaps it would be simpler if, if my substitute motion is to refer without recommendation and then ask the staff to, to help us come up with an appropriate alternative resolution language for us to consider it in, in a couple of weeks.
That would be simpler.
And that is my substitute motion. My substitute motion, for clarity, is to refer this matter to, to the full board without recommendation.
Thank you.
Yes, sir, we'll take it.
So it has been moved by Mr. Martin that, that the item six B be recommended to send to the full board without recommendation. Okay, so, all right, so it has been moved by Mr. Martin and seconded by Ms. Kennison. Okay, all right, and comments from the board. Okay, I waive my opportunity to speak. Mr. Godey?
Yes, thank you. Colleen Martin, I, I just got lost. I'm gonna be honest. What, what exactly is the concern?
So, well, the, the, I think, I think Ms. Kennison has some concerns she can speak to. I think, in the nature of the questions that I asked, that, and the-
That's where I got lost.
...implications of the intermittent leave change, and what does that mean? The, the main thing I want to do is study whether we can, you know, over the next two or three months, without really delaying this issue, can we create some new category, a special leave, that would be used, available in special circumstances, like the, where the employee can use, would, would be able to use the leave bank, without having us to actually have employees give up their leave? I don't understand all the financial implications of that, and I just want to understand that better, so we can see-
Okay.
-do we need to force employees to donate their sick leave to do this, or is there a way we can do it ourselves?
I, and I, I think I understand now, but I'm not sure. But I just want to make sure you are aware there is an extended sick leave policy.
I had not been aware of that till, till the exchange with Mr. Baloo.
Okay.
Now, I mean, well, I'm aware that there's the sick bank leave policy.
No, but there's an extended leave policy that if you've been here for a while, that you can take up to 90 days of sick leave, and your, your pay, if you go on extended sick leave, your pay is on 65% of your normal pay. So, I, I just want to make sure everyone understood that we do have an extended leave policy if someone has an exceptional illness or something like that in here. So, just wanted to make sure that was clear, that that's already in policy.
No, I, I appreciate that. That's, and, and, you know, we're all still learning about this, right?
Sure.
But, but nevertheless, if-
I understand.
-there are circumstances where a sick leave bank apparently is necessary, and if we're going to fundamentally allow employee to be off that much, and that's okay, why does that have to come at the expense of other employees giving up their, their, their sick leave? So that's, that's what I kind of want to explore.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, and I guess I have a question as well, just really quickly, because I heard you say, Mr. Martin, take two or three months to explore. So, do, do we want to, you know?
If I may, Ms. Powell, I think, I think, I think the idea is that with the simpler substitute motion, right, just to refer without recommendation, that gives us some time, and, and we can adopt the appropriate language requesting a study-
Okay.
-at that time, as I have time, as we think how long it will take them to actually do that, and we get the language right, without putting Mr. Armin and Mr., Ms. Armin and Mr. Shamlin on the spot right now.
Okay, thank you.
So we're sending it without recommendation to the regular meeting?
Correct.
Okay, okay.
That's the motion, is to refer without recommendation, and then at the regular meeting, we'll adopt the appropriate motion or substitute motion at that time.
Okay, all right, thank you. Okay, Mr. Baloo.
I'm okay with sending it without recommendation, but my comment was just like Mr. Godey said. Between now and the board meeting, you know, just comment on what, what coverages are available to employees for extended sick leave, which I'm, I, I'm aware we already have, but just comment on what, what coverage is for people with, with serious illnesses have. So, thanks.
Thank you. Mr. Lanis.
I'll just say, first, thank you, Madam Vice President, but I'll just say, thank you for the change, and thank you for the, the recommendation, because, you know, speaking with the superintendent, being that this could impact the budget, and we're going to be talking about the budget over the next few months, we need to also be able to study what those implications, implications will look like. So, just wanted to lift it up.
Thank you. Are there any additional comments from the board in regards to the substitute motion to item six B? Okay, Ms. Kennison?
I don't know if it's really about the substituting the motion. Should I wait?
That depends on what it's about. That depends on what it's about.
I just had a question about the intermittent
Yeah.
Giving of sick days and the, the language in the FMLA, Ms. Hall, policy. Is there, is that something that we can, is that an EBR policy with FMLA? How difficult would that be to make them match up so it intermittent, the giving of sick days for intermittent leave would be possible?
The same process as we done for the sick bank and the COVID leave. So if you would like that to be looked at, then we could look at it and come back with a proposal through Mr. Shamlin's office.
So that's possible?
Yes.
Thanks.
Yeah, we'd simply bring that policy for amendment as well.
Just want to make sure, Board Member Kennison, are you asking us to look into that, or are you just asking, requiring?
Yes.
I just wanted to make sure we get the action.
Okay, are there any additional comments from the board at this time? Okay, comments from the public, Ms. Matthews.
I, I do hope that what all the board members brought up gets taken into account, and hopefully Gwen has a very busy week, week and a half, with Ms. Hall. If any of you have questions about what sick leave we have available, I am probably the sickest employee that we have. I've died five times. I'm here for you to answer any questions that you guys have, you know, ask me, I'm at your disposal. We, I do have a teacher that my, with this leave, with the way that the leave used to be, the donated day is to be able to donate to somebody. There was a, a teacher who wanted to donate to a single mom who, I don't know if she was pregnant with the fourth child, or if she already had four kids, I don't know what the situation was, but they wanted to donate to her because she didn't have enough time saved to, for her maternity leave. And this, this teacher was going, I was about to retire, and was wanting to give them her days, but that teacher hadn't used all of her extended sick leave, so could not, didn't qualify to receive it. So this policy, the way it's being amended, would really, would have really helped her in that time. So I, I do really think that it doesn't apply to very many people as far as getting the donated days, but I do think those that it does apply to is really going to help, and so I appreciate your thought and your time and your effort looking into this, and especially those extra little pieces that you guys added tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Seeing no additional comments from the public, we now return to comments from the board, and I have entered my name into the queue, just, you know, understanding the power of storytelling for myself, and of course, I'm definitely going to keep it brief. As a teacher in East Baton Rouge several years ago, I found myself battling with illness that I didn't know what was going on with my body, and finally, I ended up spending a week in ICU. And when I returned, by the end of the school year, I had exhausted all of my sick leave, and I actually didn't even have any funds left to be able to use for summer pay, and which led to an entire financial issue that ended, ended with a, with a bankruptcy. And so the idea of being able to help our staff and our faculty with this opportunity, however we decide to word it, is wonderful. I wish we had it then, I probably would have a higher credit score than what I have now. So thank you to all who have participated in that process. All right, are there any additional comments from the board? Okay, let us enter into a vote.
Please vote. Has it not popped up for anybody? What about now? It's confused. Can you try, you want to try to refresh? Yeah, I may have to refresh. Do you all want to just do a roll call vote? You good, Vice, Madam Vice President, you're okay with me doing a roll call? District one, Mr. Ballou?
Yes.
District two, President Lanis?
Yes.
District three, Vice President Powell?
Yes.
District five, Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
District six, Mr. Russ?
Yes.
District seven, Mr. Goday?
Yes.
District eight, Ms. Kennison?
Eight.
District nine, Mr. Martin?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Okay, moving to item seven, Resolution: Community School Model. Consideration of a Request for the Adoption of a Resolution to Establish a Sustainable Community Schools Model. Ms. Kennison?
Should we read it now?
Yes, ma'am.
All right. EBR Sustainable Community Schools Resolution, February 2023. Whereas the EBR School District is committed to bringing assets of the East Baton Rouge Parish community, city parish, agencies, and nonprofits to bear in the establishment and support of community schools that build strategic partnerships and expand opportunities and resources that increase student success and reduce barriers to learning that impede the academic achievement of our children. And whereas, when coupled with high-quality core instructional programming, community schools are a vehicle for school transformation that can help close the persistent and destructive opportunity gaps in our schools and reverse the growing inequality in our society. And whereas, the EBR Parish School District's definition of a community school is, "A place and a set of strategic partnerships amongst the school and community resources that promote student achievement, family involvement, positive conditions for learning, and the well-being of our families and communities. It maintains a core focus on all children while recognizing that children grow up in families and that families are integral parts of communities. It builds an integrated strategy that enhances academics and student well-being through enrichment, health, and social supports, family engagement, teacher supports, professional development, and youth and community development. Community schools are anchored by a full-time community school coordinator that is specifically assigned to one school. The coordinator's role is to partner with the principal and other administrators, teachers, school staff, parents, school family council, community members, and students to design and implement programs and services at the schools that meet the needs of students, their families, and the community. And whereas, this integrated strategy will lead to student success, strong families, healthy communities, increased partnership, and a positive return on investment based on the role of the community school coordinator. Now therefore, be it resolved, although the design of each community school must be tailored to the specific needs and assets of its children, families, and communities, every community school should include the following. School leadership that is committed to the community school model, to seeing it as a strategy, parallel to the school's instructional program, including this community school coordinator as integral to its leadership team. Should be a school, should include a school family council that includes parents, community members, school staff, and youth in substantively and regularly advising the principal and school leadership team about all school matters that impact the well-being of the children, the school's children, including but not limited to the school's non-academic program components and the use of the school building beyond regular school hours. A full-time community school coordinator who partners with the principal and serves as an essential member of the school's leadership team and whose role is to develop, coordinate, integrate, and align programs and partnerships that serve students, families, and the community. Strategic community partners, community-based organizations, and other partners that are deeply invested in improving student outcomes and integrated into decision-making, coordination, and implementation of the community school strategy. Services, supports, and advocacy programs are informed by a comprehensive needs and assets assessment in the school and in the community. Outcomes, strategies, location of responsibility, and timelines regarding accomplishments will be reflected in a three-year, annually-updated rolling strategic action plan. The services, support, and advocacy programs should include, A, coordinated after-school and summer programs for students, including those most in need, such as those students whose history includes chronic absenteeism, and B, an evidence-based systematic school climate and safety program such as restorative practices and such others that respond to the identified needs of children, families, and the community. C, integrated student supports that support the mental, physical, and emotional needs of students, families, and community members. D, family and community engagement that includes programs and family strengthening activities, workshops, and workforce development. Ongoing professional development for school leadership, all staff, parents, and partners designed to improve the outcomes for the community school strategic action plan that includes a positive and supportive school climate, effective partnerships, and transformative parent and community engagement. Dedicated space in the school for the community school coordinator, partners, and parents. Systems accessible to the community school coordinator to collect, analyze, and respond to real-time data on student and school indicators such as attendance, achievement, and program participation, as well as workflows for scheduling, programming, and other essential functions that support student success. Community Schools Steering Committee, CSSC, a public body developed to support the vision, policy, and resource alignment for the community school strategy at the district level. Evaluation of the effectiveness of the schools, the community school strategy shall be part of the routine assessment of the school's effectiveness as a whole. I so move.
Thank you. It has been moved by Ms. Kennison. Is there a second? Okay, seeing none, this motion does fail. Okay, Alphabet C, Next Meeting Dates Announcements. Number one, announcements of meetings. Regular board meeting is to be held on March 16, 2023, at 5:00 PM in the Central Office Board Room. Board workshop is to be held on April 6, 2023, from 4:00 to 5:00 PM in the Central Office Board Room. Committee of the whole meeting is to be held on April 6, 2023, at 5:00 PM in the Central Office Board Room. Yes, okay, Dr. Narcisse?
I just wanted to recognize our entire, out of our 6,000 staff, and also all the women that are here. It is Women's Month, so wanted to recognize you all, actually should be recognized all 12 months, but I know this month is your month, and we're doing a lot of sets of programs, and just wanted to, women have played a major part in, not only in our country, but in this world, and a major part in this city, and also, we wanted to recognize our young lady, our female students in our, in our school system, who are the future leaders, such as the examples that we have. So just wanted to give you all a hand for the great work that you've done in, in our community. Thank you.
Thank you. Meeting adjourned.